We do have an executive that schedule would somebody like to make a motion in regard. Executive.
I'm moved to enter executive session, conduct strategy and preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, but planning director and the town administrator. And we will be returning to open session when we are finished.
Say.
It's a roll call. And that Jeff.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
I mean, yes, David.
Yes.
In my.
Yes.
Live yet, so we are now in executive session, Mr. Johnson. All right, we're going to open the reopen our meeting, move into um open session. And before we get into the business of this evening, I'll read you the script for remote conducted open meetings presented to us by the governor. As a preliminary matter, preliminarily matter, I am Christopher Silver, the chair of the main and select board. And please permit me to confirm all members in person. Anticipated on the agenda, a president can hand me the only person who would be in question, Steph Duggan. Just wave. There you are. Okay, so Steph is there. Everyone else is in the room. So, good evening, this open meeting of the select board is being conducted by Zoom and in person as a hybrid meeting. And the speakers on the agenda will be participating remotely. In the chair may allow for. The public to provide public the public to provide public comment as well. The board would like to hear public comments, and if there is further action that is required by the board, the chair or meeting manager will add the matter as appropriate. To a forthcoming agenda. Depending upon the comments, the board may, if there we are able within the confines of the open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter later. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public. The meeting will or hearings will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast to individual attendees. Unless otherwise required by law, accordingly. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, so please take care not to screen show your computer because anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. And all the materials for this meeting are on board docs, except for executive session information. So we'll turn to the ground rules of the meeting and um first, before we do so. Let's. Permit me to cover the ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. The chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda, and after they have concluded their remarks. Chair will down the line of the members inviting each by name to provide any common questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to meet your mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. And please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. Members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourselves. For items with public comments, after the members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify themselves by their names and address only. And once we have a list of all public commentators. We will call each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Public comment for public hearings, at which we have two this evening, will only be accepted in person per open meeting law. And with that said, we will move into our regular scheduled meeting. With the pledge allegiance, if everyone can stand and pronounce in the pledge allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to require. All right. Public comments, do we have any public comments in the room this evening? Okay, online, do we have any public comments on Zoom? Okay, we'll move right into the agenda. Uh, the first item on the agenda is a public hearing, but. We do have um. One item to to take care of first, and that is a donation acceptance of a flag box from Colt Jackson. So Colt, if you'd like to. Whatever you say.
Hi, uh, my name is Colt Jackson, I'm a boys scout in Troop on thirty um. I am here to ask for the for you guys to accept my donation of a flag box. To help the citizens here in Maynard. Um, who need to retire their flags. Um, I'd like to say that um, we have a date tentatively on June fourteenth at six P M. Where we'll hold our ceremony at Memorial Park. Um, with the lodge, uh, the Els Lodge in Maynard. Um. And um, I'd also like to say that. We do have twenty-four flags that were donated to us and that. If you show up with a flag and you give it to us. Uh, we have twenty-four flags and one flag could be um. Good.
So you want more? All right.
Exchange, yeah.
Very so, all right. That's great, and we will, I think I can speak for all of us, and we'll get to it in a minute, we'll accept the donation, but can you tell us? Um, where where are we gonna place the flag box?
Um, it will be held at the um. Maynard Fire Department.
Okay. Indoors, outdoors?
Um.
Any idea?
Will either be held in.
Okay.
Um, we have a section right in that festival, so somebody could come in when.
So in the. It's um. In the back.
If in the front, we went in the lobby.
Well, we consider a back.
Oh, yeah. When you drive up to it and then, all right, okay, so we're building first, and we're all right, all right, I know where you are, okay, up on the hill, okay. Great.
So Colt, is this part of the Eagle Top Project, or this is something you wanted to do on?
It didn't part of my Eagle Top Project, yeah.
Very cool. Beautiful. It really looks amazing.
Very happy to help with this project, and say we get a call, these boys, we don't want to do with the flags. Um, and this is a resource that the individuals have, so. They're proud of Colt for being able to take care of this. He worked very hard on it.
And okay, judging by the judging by the picture, Colt, you're my neighbor somewhere. That's definitely my neighbor.
Uh, Colt, what question, uh, you had mentioned during your presentation that you had a date, is that gonna be Flag Day?
It is going to be Flag Day, uh, June fourteenth at eight.
Yeah, okay. Great.
All right. Fantastic. Does anybody have any questions for Colt? Other than the ones that have already been closed?
All right, just just one comment, just uh, congratulations, Colt, congratulations, standing up in public is is not always an easy thing to do, but you did a very nice job, well done, thank you.
We're gonna have you do the pledge allegiance, but they wanna they wanna they wanna make you upset, but. Anyways, so somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move to accept the donated flag election box from Scout Colt Jackson. Second.
All was in favor. So um, thank you very much. For doing this for the town. And good luck, and good luck as you move forward in the scout process.
Good luck, very good luck.
Yep. Thank you, thanks, Pete. All right, uh, so now we're into a um, we're gonna have a public hearing. It was scheduled to seven fifteen, so we just can't stop before that, so we're gonna start at seven nineteen. Let me read the um. Public hearing notice, then we'll get into the hearing. So this first one is for um eighty-six Powder. Um, notice is hereby given in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter one thirty-eight, as amended. That a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, May eighth, twenty twenty-four. Seven fifteen P M. At Sound Hall, Room two zero one, one ninety-five Main Street, Maynard, Mass. Zero one seven five four. To consider the application for a transfer of a section fifteen package store, all alcoholic beverages licensed for Maynard Liquors, Inc. Doing business at Maynard Liquors. Manager Anand Patel at eighty-six Powder Mill Road, Maynard, Mass. Hybrid option attended by a Zoom using access instructions on the posted agenda to be found at W W W dot town of Maynard. Dash mass dot go. And a copy of this application is on file in the office of the select board. The hearing is now open, it is seven twenty. Um. Greg?
Yeah, so um. For the select boards and the public's awareness, this has this particular license was been the topic months ago and a lot of confusion between um. Those who had possessed the the license, but then also the the a business sort of transfer between two parties, but it kind of went around. And then and the license is kind of having a little while, there's paperwork involved, et cetera. Um, so I'm excited to have potential new partners with the town if you would. With these gentlemen, and it is that it'll point of confusion. There was Patels involved with past parties, these are all the tells of different. And then, uh, but uh, my assumption is your attorney court.
I am.
That's very good, so uh, so I'm I'm relieved to to have these gentlemen come before you. Um, because it does show progress and was the 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 sort of play. Turmoil and confusion of where the license was gonna go. Hopefully, this is resolved.
This is. For our own, our own recollection, this is the license that was bought and sold and resold and rebought, and it's been back.
There there was questions about whether.
Quite a while, yeah. So this this will um, so I guess I'm asking you, Greg, and Attorney Porter?
Yes.
I'm asking you two, this will put this to bed, we'll be done with. All that. From our from our.
We gotta run the business.
No, no, but but from the standpoint of the the license, the legalese and all that stuff that we've kind of, all of us have kind of struggled through with this license over the course of, I think it's been about two years.
Uh, yeah.
Minimally, yeah, okay, so great, that's great.
Yes.
Um, so there's two motions, Greg, can you just for, you know, just explain to us? What the first motion means and what the sex mo- second motion does, and then we'll. Um, we'll and once we, you know, open the hearing to questions, yeah, the board may have questions, and then we'll do the motions and move forward.
So um. In the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we have a very strong alcohol beverage control mission. And whereas the select board is the local licensing authority, still has to be vetted and reviewed and therefore applied to. The A B C C at the state level. The board's action this evening is is to consider to authorize the application to go to the A B C C. With the understanding that it's already embedded on on our office by the town on that, so. When this, then when the state receives that application, the assumption is the local licensing authority is endorsing the license to eventually be issued. However, it's not yet issued, it's not then, it comes back from the A B C C to the town. We found out. Recently, unlike many years of practice in in the in the town of Maynard. The A B C C says. The licensing authority must take action recommended by the A B C C within five days of receiving the A B C C's decision, being. Um, in theory, if the select were to authorize this application to the A B C C, however long it takes them to get through it. We're gonna get an email, Greg and I, and within five days, we're supposed to issue them or not, if if they if maybe they don't issue them to them. Um, and so. Unlike. Years of past practice, the second motion for the for the board this evening is to authorize us to actually give the license, because the A B C C's expectation is within five days of getting that email, we have to we have to give it.
Okay. Um, does anybody have any questions or the applicants?
They will give a brief rundown, if that would be helpful, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Like, yeah, um, so I'll just introduce myself again, I'm Matthew Porter, I'm the attorney for Major Major Liquors, Inc. Along with me is Pavelet Patel, Mr. Patel is one of the two principals of the corporation.
Okay.
As you stated, this is before the board on a transfer of the existing all alcohol package store license, so. Mr. Patel and his partner, Anand Patel, uh, would be taking over this location, both are very experienced operators, Mr. Patel owns. Uh, three other locations, uh, which he's operated very successfully, uh, very responsibly as well. Um, so it's a very good ownership group coming in, obviously, the the store recently had fallen on hard times, but it was a well-established business for a couple of decades. Um, so this is the tell plan is to breathe new life into it, um, no major structural changes, no extension of hours or anything along those lines, but certainly some cosmetic repairs. Um, you know, bring his wealth of knowledge into operating it. Um, you know, thi- this has been held up for an extended period of time, but. The agreement is in place with the bankruptcy board, um, everything is squared away there, we have a new la- lease in place with the landlord, uh, Mr. Kaufman is actually. On Zoom call in case there was any questions with him, um, Mr. Patel also financing the purchase, so Rockland Trust. As the bank behind that, so before the board, you'll see, in addition to the transfer of license, uh, we're requesting a pledge of license and inventory to Rockland Trust, which is basically just collateral for the bank. But with that, I can certainly answer any questions that the board may have with this account as well.
I I I apologize for, you know, we we have been going back and forth with this for.
Yeah.
A very long time, so I just um. For my understanding. As as this, Mr. Patel, have you? You haven't been before us before at all, so.
I can give you a little bit of a background, so there was a transaction together with a with another Mr. Patel, which is a very common name.
Yeah, right, right, right.
So that transaction fell apart, the the uh, license itself fell into bankruptcy.
Correct.
At that point, the bankruptcy trustee, yeah, Kim Nicholson, who represents the bankruptcy trustee. Uh, she's here with you, I I know you've met me. Um, essentially, uh, Mr. Patel and the bankruptcy trustee were able to come with an agreement, you know, together, so that agreement is now in place, um, and everything is. Essentially, if it's approved here, it's off the A B C C and left it, um, you know, it'll take a few months up there to get approval, and Mr. Patel will be able to get the same public one.
Okay, so so can you go back to the piece about Rockland, we don't have to do anything with that, that's.
You do, yeah, you have to approve a pledge, so. Um, a a pledge is essentially it's collateral for the bank, so if the bank is lending on purchase of a liquor store, one of the most valuable assets of the package store is the liquor license and the inventory within it. So it's essentially, it's collateral on that loan, now how a pledge would work is, God forbid, and we do not anticipate this happening, if the bank were to foreclose on the this on Mr. Patel's business. And the pledge of license, it does not mean that Rockland Trust then owns the license, the license would have to come back before the board for approval. So while you're approving the pledge today, you're not, the board is not losing any control of that license.
Okay, but as I'm reading through our our evening's package, I don't see. That pledge here.
I was, uh, so I missed the board, I was not. Aware of that, now maybe you go get it in my office and it doesn't matter, but. I'm so I would like all the time to consult counsel about that, so if you don't mind, maybe reconvening that that intention to my office, so that I can double check with counsel. Sure, I I would say that the only thing that is a little bit finicky about that is that the A B C C requires that the board approve the pledge, so I'm I'm not asking for it. If the board is not comfortable approving it tonight, then it is what it is, but we would have to go. It's not as simple as me just reaching back out and see if it's actually happened.
No, 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 we we I understand that we have to, um, we have to approve that, but. We don't have it. Yeah, so we so we so we don't have the language, we don't have any of it in front of us, and to Greg's point, you know, before we. Um, pledge anything, we are gonna get advice from town council, and that's and that's it. Um, I assume that, you you know, I assume that he wants to get going, you want to get going. Greg will get it in the next twenty-four, forty-eight hours, I would guess, and then we'll have it on our next agenda, which is. May twenty-first, I would expect that if we have it on May twenty-first, if the town council approves, we'll we'll vote it May twenty-first and have.
Do you exactly require a public hearing?
We just, we just continue the.
Oh, yeah, we can.
Continue to publish here.
Yeah, and and what I would say, you know, and I understand this confusion on this, I I would just point out. So the application that's done with A B C C is a multipurpose application, so if you look at the application itself, it has the request of pledge of inventory, so there's no additional paperwork that's filed, it's it's our. Can you can you give me the reference, if you have the application, and I can verify that now, although I would feel more comfortable. With that, I have more confidence to have word by attending with that group, o- only because I'm not, this is rather unique, I don't recall the headboard of remaining asked to authorize and let pledge. And I'm not saying that it's untrue, but I I just not, I'm not. Yeah, so it's standard practice for the most part now with with any banks that are financed, okay, package stores, and you know, the reason being is. It's not, there's no real estate of all these transactions, no collateral there for property, so the only collateral of a bank. To lend on a business is essentially to collect it, so it's it's though they're taking a security interest in it. Um, but if you look at the application itself, you would see on the monetary transaction form, which is the first form, uh, in addition to that, that's section one. Which lists off, you know, the request for pledge of licenses, so you would see a request for inventory of pledge. Um, and then within the package itself, you would see a draft pledge, you know, from Rockland Trust. I'll certainly have been answering questions, you know, right, once you review the time.
Yeah, okay, so so aside from the pledge, does anybody have any questions for?
Yeah, one quick question, uh, probably a very simple answer, yes or no, I would assume, uh. The prior owner operated as an online service, at least at some point, this has nothing to do with an online.
It's gonna be a brick and mortar store, and obviously, every one of these package stores now has contracts in Jersey against of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Stop.
Yeah.
But this is a brick and mortar.
Okay, so people will be able.
The vast majority, oh, yes, the vast majority of this is being done in that location, there may be some. Delivery services, but that's not the central focus of that business.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, being that this is a public hearing, does anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? And anybody on Zoom with any questions or comments? Okay. All right, with that said, um, so we'll hold off. On voting, we'll, we will um. Not close the hearing, we will extend the hearing. To um, May. Twenty-first. At seven fifteen P M., and then we'll. Have assumed all the information back. Then we got to the pledge, and we'll be um, we'll be able to vote. Pretty quickly at that point.
And and certainly what I could do, I I would prefer to not drive back up here.
No, no.
What I can do is, um, I could appear to be zoomed as well.
Yeah.
So that way, if there's any follow-up questions on this.
You don't like Maynard?
I love it, it's beautiful, right?
No, no, we we appreciate that, we appreciate that you both came, uh, feel free to both, you you know, do it by Zoom, we've met the guys, it's probably no other questions.
For sure.
Um, and we'll we'll just breeze through it, and just once we have that back stack, we'll we'll, I think we'll be good to go.
Have town council reach out if they have any questions, happy to answer those.
Okay, so, great, thank you, gentlemen.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we're gonna um. Extend the hearing to. That date, is there any other language other than that? Uh, so.
Continue to hear.
Continue the hearing till May twenty-first at seven fifteen P M. All right, um, next. We have a. A layout hearing. Which is a public hearing. Three. Okay. Where is the um? The language for the the. Did we have to advertise this?
Yeah.
You did, but hold on, I just wanted to, I know what you're asking.
I'm just looking for the language for that.
Providing this language to council on this. So I'm double checking that there's no. Move to the hearing, I would recommend at a minimum, perhaps the board make a motion to open here. And then it will be the second.
Okay, I make a motion to open the public hearing. On the layout hearing for Fletcher Street, Allen Drive and Heights Terrace. That's seven thirty-three.
Second.
Second. Okay, all was in favor of voting in public here.
Vola?
Or I don't know. Well, yeah, well, Jeff.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
I mean, yes, as well, so in all the public. The layout hearing is now open. Um. Greg. You or Justin, who's gonna?
Well, this is, this is, although Justin could speak to maybe the operations, but this is. Um, administrative, so there. Was not a layout hearing when we tried to do this cycle, um, more than a year ago, in these particular roads, Allen Drive, Fletcher Street and Heights Terrace, this this particular action was. Is missed amongst the. The the long actions that it takes to. You know, basically, accept private roads into public roads. Um, where and the and the easement and the takings was approved by special town meeting in fall, uh, twenty twenty-three, um, and then. This actual tonight of the layout here will allow for presumably the full acceptance of the roads at the May twentieth annual town meeting. Um, I also want to point out for the board that since the fall and now. The plans have gone from draft form to final form, so. Um, you'll see that the motion includes the dates of those plans, which are both on the board docs and kept in the clerk's office. As August eighth and August twenty-ninth, as verified by the town town engineer. Um. And then that that motion is also reflected in the annual town meeting motion, it's a slight amendment towards the board, this one was written. A while ago. Um, so otherwise, it's relatively straightforward, it's again, this is administrative action. Um. And operations of, you know, we're planning to to make those improvements to these streets once again.
Okay. Um. Anybody have any questions, Greg, we got to this this hearing? Anybody in the room have any questions? Anyone in line have any questions? Hearing no questions, and we'll ask if anyone would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to lay out and thereby adopt the following roadways as public ways, Allen Drive, Fletcher Street and Heights Terrace, as shown on a plan entitled. Plan of land in Maynard, Massachusetts, and prepared by V H B, Inc., one-on-one Walnut Street, P O Box nine one five one, Watertown, Mass. O two four seven one dash nine one five one, and dated August eighth and twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Okay, any further conversation on the board? All was in favor, Jeff.
Yes.
Justin.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
You know, I mean, yes. Next. Anyone who would like to make a motion?
We'll close the hearing at seven thirty-six P M.
Second.
All in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Oh, yes, the hearing is now closed. And we're on to special licenses. Long time no see. We've been here for a while. It must be summer season.
Yes.
All right, so um, why don't you, either one of you gentlemen, tell us what we're. Being asked, and then we'll read the motions and see what happens.
Sounds good, we have two um, one day permits in front of you today for a beer in line, um, one is for the Mayor Drive Fest, which is coming up on. Uh, sorry, June ninth, yeah, Sunday, June ninth, from twelve to, I think, five or twelve sixteen. Um, so we have an application there for that event, and then we also have one for the main Jazz Fest on Saturday. Um, June fifteenth.
Okay. So you guys just gonna kind of go across to speak with your.
Uh, yes, we've talked about Jazz Fest, I think, three times so far, um, the idea was, and we've been asked by the Economic Development Committee and different groups, um, to be present at those events, so we're not drawing people away. From a town event to come to the beer garden, invite, hear the music, if they have a Jazz Fest, they can come and sit with us and be comfortable here, but they won't be attending Jazz Fest. Um, and so we've been asked to participate in those events. Part of that we do a sponsorship for those, that will be also. Um, set up their, or ship their request, so. Um, a process there where we deserve beer.
Um. You guys gonna be on the parking lot area, I see the.
We're being addressed this year, I talked with Chief Noble, um, we had a long talk on Friday, and we got a discussion about this, because both events are going up to Memorial Park this year. Um, they're going to be shutting down Summer Street, I guess, as well, um, we did have a conversation with, um, Chief Noble, you may have an older map, because when I put in the application, we got a new map for each of these, I can bring up. You, um, it's definitely for. Jazz, I'll prefer. Um, just because after, we could go, then we had a meeting with the chief noble, and he said he didn't want us on the neighborhood paint areas. He didn't want everything on Summer Street or on the sidewalks, for the people in the park itself. Um, we had a discussion about how to handle a further of those events, and it's like signage, um. Us having our our people on on site, and then the sleep off, we don't quite, we're gonna keep an eye and make sure that we're informed and that drinking is held in the food area. Uh, and you see on both of those plans, there's a slightly different, which might have reached that just because of layouts. So we'll be within the grass area, um, against a, uh, basically against the black pen. Um, and then for the stage is marked on there, it goes a whole part.
I did.
How do you um, limit the um. You know, twenty-one and under.
Yeah, so the same way, uh, so we do with bracelets, um, so it is that you would have signage up, you'd have to play one plus to to approach the bar itself. And then we'd be bracelets, we'd be able to identify who is able to have a name in the hand. We've done some events of the town in the past, where there's like a special area that led to like ten by ten that was rolled up. And the problem is it kind of segregates the group, so you get one person that wants beer and some that wants food. And they kind of ended up split up, and we can't be together, that family can't be together, so. Um, definitely talked to to Chief Noble about what they done with the Rotary Fest and the path up here at the parking lot. Was having a larger area that, you know, you can kind of stay within that area, and I think that the park would be a good, like, point key, that as long as we had signage and and we were clear about that.
And the and the event, obviously, I know you're you're dealing with the both events. Organizers as well, so they're okay with you taking up the entire park?
Um, yeah, they they were, we're not taking up the entire park, we're gonna have a little. A little, you know, we'll have our tent, we'll be selling, but they they had asked that we also were able, you know, people were able to go through the whole park with the with the beverage. If that makes sense, that was the question.
So a person who is of age, who has a bracelet, and who buys. A beverage from you guys. In theory. Then you can't control it necessarily, they're required to stay within the red line, so this diagram.
Correct.
You know, it's gonna be offensive, they told you that.
So Chief Noble took it for front off, no offense. So he's then, uh, he got signage, and then we'll have a person telling a person checking, and then we'll be also police presence on on site, so to keep an eye on.
The ones. I mean, you guys do what you're gonna do, the one, the one for the night, it's. Is there a room over there? Is there a room over there?
To go, there's an opening there, they wanted to put us originally like right up against Mason, uh, some, so against Summer Street. But the fear was that people would be trampling the bushes, the things that were there, because there's no way to stay in the grass area. So they put us back where there's the opening there, you know.
So if someone wants to get to you, right, in that, on that, in that scenario.
Yeah.
They walk, walk in the, you know, as soon as they walk in the brickway.
Yeah.
And there's the monument at the back and you're to the left of the monument or to the right?
Big gap, like a ten foot gap between two big monuments. The goal was to keep people on the cement area, we didn't want to have people, like I said, trampling the garden.
Okay, okay.
And then organizer requested that we were told for the food drop, so that's why we're flexible.
Good.
Um, Chief, Chief Noble also said that we could use the, um, evidence of the other class, we've done multiple events in the town. Use the first one and then whatever suggestions, you know, work with the police department to make whatever necessary corrections we need the following week if there are challenges. Um, we've done that in town when we've done like, um, the week of the six week license and back to back. We know the police chief after the fourth weekend, went through everything, made sure that we had it buttoned up and working on it both of just to make sure that there was no. Issues or no things that came about that we, you know, we want to do.
All right, great.
I, I have one question, um, I, I'm just having trouble locating the exact places, where does it stand in relation to the memorial itself? I'm just concerned. That's memorial, okay, I'm just concerned about, you know, being right in on, on the memorial.
Yeah, that's what we want to make sure we weren't anywhere where any of the, the, any, any of the, um, stones are, any of the benches, any of the planters. Want to be in an area that, that's kind of between these two trees, that doesn't, it, it's, it's already a walk with it.
I, I know that the organizers are may or sort of arranging for where you are, but, um, I'm with Mike and then I think there's a reference to Memorial Park.
Yeah.
The park itself and, you know, there've been other issues where people have wanted to have events of, you know. Of some due, ado in the memorial itself and, you know, for me, it's sort of a, it's, it's just personally, I'd say. Would prefer it to be somewhere else, but the organizers can do what they want to do, I guess, but, uh, you know, I would prefer we stay away from having beer and. Uh, frivolity in the, uh, in, in, uh, what's supposed to be a reverent.
I, I fully understand, I, so I mean, that's for Jazz Fest, we want to make sure we're getting off the other side, um, right, it was, you know, we'll go wherever. If the board approves our application, we'll go wherever the board would like to, you know what I mean, um, but that was the, the site plan I gave you based on what we have.
I, I, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with it, I think that, um. To David's point, I'd like to take a look, or have someone take a look at exactly where they're asking you to go because. They may need to be corrected, because to David's point, if you have a, a memorial. With some other sport that's considered, you know, sacred in some way to have people stop around is just not, it's just not what it's designed to do, so.
Um, just want to be sure you're okay with it being in the park, it's not.
Oh, yeah.
So, so looking at the picture that, you know. So here's, so here's, here's what I'll say to you, um, we'll vote, right, we're likely to get voted to approve unless. These guys don't like it, but, so we'll vote that way and then, um, I think what we will do is I think we'll have a conversation and perhaps. Um, just tell the organizers of that thing to move it, to, to ask you to move it and that's, that's fine.
Yeah, and we can meet down, if anyone wants to meet there, we're happy to meet, walk through the park, I did it on Friday. We just, we can did some drawings, get an idea for it, we're in theory, but we're happy to do whatever the board recommends.
Okay, so, um, all right, um, other than those issues, does anyone have any questions? Please find gentleman. No, would anybody like to make a motion on the, um, one day license for June ninth, Friday?
Uh, move to approve the one day special license for the sale of alcoholic beverages by Amy's Tomb at Naylor Court. In conjunction with the Maynard Pride Fest on June ninth, twenty twenty four, from twelve P M to six P M. Authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further conversation, questions?
I have one or one and a half more questions, which is that, so we are gonna reach back out though to Pride Fest to make sure.
I have that as that.
That, okay, um, yeah, but I don't, I, I know, I, I just wanna try to pull up quickly what we gave permission for, but I guess we don't normally.
We don't usually dictate where, what goes what.
Right, but I, I don't think anyone normally uses that area either, you know, I mean, I think that's the, I think that's, that's the part that I'm.
We're trying to get from the stage up towards Mason. Just because we're all behind the bands and stuff, you know, that way, and I think that's better overall, but again, we're.
Yeah, no, that, I mean, and that's fine, but the other question I have, it, it speaks to this, but also it engages Justin just a little bit higher. Um, it might be something that the board thinks about moving forward, but if we're having, so we've got. You know, two events that are a week apart where there's gonna be a whole lot of people on the grasses. That's a whole lot of use for that area and that might be something that we need to consider and it has nothing to do with you guys and. But if we're, if we're looking at hosting more festival type things in the grassy area, that's gonna, that's gonna, um, really affect. The look of the park, you know, after the next few days, like in a, in a week.
I mean, like, it's, it's, it's not. It's not a sports field, so it doesn't have the, the grass in the first place, but, and, and it's rare. I might be mistaken, I don't recall a lot of back to back events like this.
Right, exactly, so it, it just happens, they, they both come up and, and I'm fully supportive of all the events and, you know, the ten, you know, being there, it's just something that we need to keep.
Yeah.
In mind moving forward.
Which was your half question?
That was that, I think that was.
Okay, I was confused.
There'll also be more than usual number of people on that property the week before that as well, first on Memorial Day. Excellent, great.
Put our fertilizer to, to test, our fertilizer lawn gear system. But, that being said, um, so we had a motion, it was seconded. On the, um, June ninth, Justin had a question or two, does anyone else have any questions before we go?
We want to amend the motion to put the location of the beer tent between the base and the state security, do we want to go?
I think you, they, I mean.
Uh, I think we can trust these guys. Yeah, I, I think, I think, I think, yeah, I think I'm okay without it, but if any, if you guys would like to make an amendment, that's fine too. We'd like to amend the, a motion to include a, um, location to the, be determined section, you know. Move to approve the one day special license for the sale of alcoholic beverages by Amy's Tomb at Naylor Court. In conjunction with the Maynard Pride Fest on June ninth, twenty twenty four, twelve P M, six P M. Location to be determined and authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved, would work for me.
Second.
Okay, anything else? Okay, so all in favor of that one? All right, now we're on to Jazz Fest, uh, different location. Um, does anybody have any questions about the, uh, location or the date and time of the Jazz Fest?
Yeah.
Which is June fifteenth, the following week. No?
No, I think they were all answered.
Yeah, exactly.
I do think it's a good idea to revisit the, you know, to, to that.
Yeah, we'll follow, we'll follow up, I think, anyway, whoever, whoever's the.
I like the location of the tent on that one.
Yeah.
We can get a good, we're trying to plan and solve, we can get a two point two of most of the parks, so we're not. So we have as much visibility on it and we'll use regular bracelets, so we have that as there is.
The other problem there is it's not the flanist.
No, that's okay, we're, we're, we don't need level surface, but I know that's a challenge, it's a hill coming back.
A winter events, that's where the donut table goes during a winter event, donut and coffee table, but anyway. Um, so would somebody like to make a motion in regards to the, um, Jazz Fest application on June fifteenth?
I'll move to approve the one day special license to the sale of alcoholic beverages by Henry's Tomb at Naylor Court in conjunction with the Maynard Jazz Fest on June fifteenth. From noon to eight P M and authorize use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Do, does anybody have any further questions in regards? All was in favor. All right, gentlemen, thank you. Good luck.
See you there. I'll be out of town, Jazz Fest.
So now it's the contracts, uh, Mr. 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 Justin, I know this is your time, um, so contracts A. Contract A is being, um, pushed back to the next, next meeting, we had some questions in regards to the. Major we see tonight, so now we're on to, um, contract B, which is Mount Burning Group.
This is loosely associated with Justin, well, uh, hey, uh, and then, and then there is. I mean, it's up to you, Mr. Chair, about the order of attacks, but you have Justin here, you can do all of them, um, but even C is not really Justin. But we'll get to that in a minute, so, um, for the Valverde, Mr. Chair, it's, uh, it is related to the Green Metal School, which, trust me, they've been having the school building. Many, as a bud, so you, so, um, but we're also joined this evening by Jerry Flower, Jerry. He's the chair of the school building and we have Phil Bellwell, he's our project manager.
Hi guys.
All right, so, so Phil, I guess you might be the best person, just give us a brief overview of what we're looking at.
Sure, so in that amendment, you have six designer proposals, all six were, were budgeted for. Um, one is for additional geotech borings, which is typical, once you get past the local vote to get more borings and test pits. Pits done as relates to building foundation design and stormwater drainage design. Um, another, another proposal within the six is for environmental testing, so. The different soil samples grabbed during the borings to, uh, test those out to see if there's any chemical concerns in the soils. Third ad service proposal is for, one second, is for additional hazmat sampling, um, of the building. As well as the exterior envelope and the roof, um, and then the remaining three are related to. Um, making a move with the, uh, K through three playground within the site design. So you have one of them for the civil engineering work behind that, one of them for the landscape architecture work behind that. And the one of them for the architect to kind of manage the whole process. Um, so between those six proposals, you have a total amendment amount of three hundred ninety three thousand, four hundred three dollars and fifty cents. And all that money's was budgeted for.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Somebody like to, does anybody have any questions about those six items or any of the information in the clothes, in the packet for? Either Jerry or Phil or Greg, Dave or Justin? Okay, uh, would somebody like to make a motion?
I will move to approve amendment number five with Mount Burning Group Architects for the Green Metal School Building Project Design Bid Bill Designer Contract. In the amount of three hundred ninety three thousand, four hundred three dollars and fifty cents as presented authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Exactly, okay, um, questions, concerns, Greg, anybody? All was in favor? All right, contract C, the community electricity aggregation.
Thank you very much, Phil, thank you.
Thank you guys, good seeing you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Good evening.
So yeah, thanks for having us here, um, my name is Sally Warner and I'm a member of the Maynard Sustainability Committee. Um, I live here at Old Green Town, um, on Hill Mar Street. I am also a professor of climate science and with me is Paul Romer from Mass Power Choice, who is our consultant for. The project, um, so our purpose today, um, we want to give an update about where we're at with community aggregation. Um, outline the next steps and, um, we have passed on some documentation of our aggregation plan too, so I hope that you. Um, and just answer any questions that you may have, um, so yeah, so first in terms of progress, um. We've chosen a name, it will be Maynard Power Choice, we've designed a logo, there's a website, um, and materials have been created that will be sent out to residents. Um, when we get to that point in the process, um, and we've, well, office the majority of the work. In tracking the aggregation plan document, um. And the aggregation plan, this version of the aggregation plan document has been reviewed and approved unanimously by the Sustainability Committee. Um, and there had been a bit of a delay over the last six months in terms of moving this forward and that's been because of legislation going through. At the state level, um, and actually this works out in our favor because the legislation has, um, reduced the amount of time. The D P U has to approve new proposal, so it used to take up to two years, now they can only have four months or so. Um, so even though we've been delayed a little bit in submitting our application, we should get approval faster than had we submitted. Prior to the table on the decision. Um, so in terms of next steps, um, hopefully this select board today will give us, um. The okay to move forward, at which point we'll advertise, um, a thirty day public comment period. Um, in the ways that are detailed in table three C in the document. Um, and then that will start with a public presentation, which we would. Like to do at a subsequent select board meeting, we're bringing this forward now to so everyone from the select board is on board and aware. And then we do the public pre- presentation, which maybe could happen next time or will be next on the agenda, that will start the thirty day comment period. At the end of those thirty days, we'll take any comments and put those into the new aggregation plan and then submit that to D P U. Um, they'll have a hundred and twenty days to approve the plan and then once the plan is approved, then we move forward and finding bids. For, from energy suppliers and we start, um, education plan to let town residents know what to expect from. Um, so, yeah, so the, um, the aggregation plan document, it details how we plan ongoing about this, so. This, if, if you have any questions about the plan or want any changes to it.
Um, all right. So is, if you decide to not opt out.
Not opt out.
If you decide to not opt out, or you decide to opt out, I guess, yeah, if you decide to, no, if you decide to not opt out and stay in, you decide to stay in, which is what. You know, everyone's gonna end up doing at the beginning, um, is there a guarantee of it, David?
Leaving is cannot be guaranteed, um, but there would be more price stability. Because from the contracts, like, you know, every source can change our, changes our elective rates every six months. Whereas this, we would likely have a longer term contract, so people know their price of electricity for. Three years or so, the length of the contract, um, uh, and then there's three levels, there's the Maynard basic level. Which would meet just the minimum state required, um, green energy, then there would be the Maynard standard, that's what we would involve. Everyone in automatically and then there's the hundred percent green option, so people can choose between those levels. And I don't know, Paul, if you want to comment any more about.
Is there a price difference between the three?
Yes.
And what is the, um, least expensive options?
The basic plan, the one with the least green energy.
So why aren't we enrolling everybody automatically with that?
Um, I guess it's typically, typically it's done enrolled in the, in the middle, in the middle version and people have the option to. Select to go down to the basic or up to the, um, up to the hundred percent green. Um, being that we're doing this from Sustainability Committee, one of the goals of this is to have more green energy used by the. By the town, so therefore enrolling in the middle level would, would provide that. Um, but the documentation and the website will be clear as to, like, we don't know the prices yet. Um, that will come when we get the bids from, when we choose an energy supplier.
So when you have the presentation in a, in a month or, or so, you, it's still gonna have all these Xs, like, there's not gonna be any information as far as like. What the costs are or anything like that?
Yeah, and then there'll be an educate, once we are approved by D P U, then there'll be an education of, of a pretty big education campaign. We'll be doing presentations with the library, presentations at the Center for Aging, um. And, and we'll be sure to like get the message out to people and by that point then we will have prices. Um, so this is more just a public comment period about going forward with, with, with community energy.
Will, will there be direct mailing to, to people?
There will be, they'll be mailing during the education period, and that will include the opt out notice that people can, um. Go to, either mail it back or find the website in which they can opt out, they choose, or change the level at which. Level of energy that they would.
I'm still, I'm honestly, I'm, I'm, and I know that I am in the minority here, but I, I, I don't agree with an opt out. Program and I don't agree with rolling everybody into a, not the cheapest to start off, but that is my, that's my two cents, if you will.
What is it, what is, so when will you know what the price is to opt to become enrolled? What is it, what is, so when will you know what the price is to opt to become enrolled?
Well, we'll know once we, so it has to, it has to get approved by DPU, the plan. So this is like the aggregation plan, like how how we plan on going about bringing community aggregation later. Once that's approved by DPU, then we reach out to company, we open the bidding to companies. Who and energy suppliers who would want to provide the energy, and then and then we will have multiple bids and choose. Choose the one that is the best fit for me and then we will have the prices, and that's when we'll start the education campaign.
And how do you decide which ones are best fit? Is it cost, how are they, are they exempt from the thirty B process or?
Yes, so the the procurement or supplier will be exempt from the thirty B process, it's typically down as a competitive procurement. But then the town makes a decision about which of the offers it finds to be the most attractive.
Okay, and so those um those standards as far as advantageous, most advantageous, et cetera, those will be spelled out. During the bidding process?
Yes, so by a top of a second, it will be a, it will be a decision for the town to make, so I'll say is a is an introductory thing. Sally's gonna break up with explaining, it's a little bit of an on process, because what's in front of you now is really just an authorization document. Because you can't get the prices until that document has been approved by the state, so it's a little bit of a chicken wall, so. This is just a, it's kind of a plan of how you're gonna get forward without deciding yet on any of the prices. Or even actually ultimately deciding whether you own one property, you don't decide that until you see the prices, so. You wouldn't wanna make that decision, right, until you know how much things would cost. So once the plan is approved, the typical process is, it's actually a two step bidding process, where first. Um we would help you get bids from suppliers that are what's called indicative bids, they're not binding bids, but they're bids that are gonna give you the sense of. How much it costs, how much it costs for each removal, and how to think about those, make decisions about how much equity you wanna put in. Ball product, if you wanna put in anything at all, decide on the tiers and everything else. Then there's a second bid process where the final bids come in, the reason for the two processes is that when the final bids come in. They're only good for a couple of hours, so you wanna tee up in advance, what decision do you wanna make, and very commonly. towns will have that initial round, we'll do that, we'll be discussing with you, you'll decide to provide guidance. Typically to the town administrator, so that even when it comes to bid day, he's got your input into what the decision should be, and then he can.
So at what point is the town in its decision making process at the point of? No return, at what point do we, you know, when when are we at the point where we either have to yes or no this, when does that occur, when does that? Time come, and then I have I have one other question, but when when is that?
Sure, that's after state approval, once you get bids, you're only bound, once you sign the contract, we're going to need that.
Right, so before um before Sally comes back. For the final time, right, and with with a with a with a deal in place, we will know before we vote. What all these Xs and blank spaces are before we get to that point, so we'll have another look at that. And I'm assuming is that is that a fact, or is that not a fact?
It sounds like we'll have that initial set of bids, which we would expect to be close, and then we would authorize Greg, probably within a certain limit of that set of bids. To approve it, so otherwise we'd have to wait for the bids to come back in those several hours of the board, so I think we would delegate that last step to Greg, but we would have. Prices, if I'm not mistaken, that we expect to be in the ballpark, comparable, pretty close to the final bids that we would then authorize Greg. Mike, did I get that correct?
Yes, exactly.
How volatile are those prices, and I'm I'm favorable with this, so, but how volatile are those prices, in other words? If we come in and they say it's, I'm hoping to make this up, one kilowatt per hour. What's the chances that by the time the thing comes back, it's five kilowatt per hour?
Very, very small, if if I if I understand your question is, what's the likelihood of a change between the indicative bids and the final bid? Typically, it's very, very small, because we do them reasonably close together, so you know, within a few weeks typically. Um it's unusual for the electricity prices to move a whole lot. And if they were to, and the final bids came in, and they weren't in a lot in line with what you were expecting. You can always reject all the bids and then have the final bids again another day, so the bids are a surprise, you're not obligated to take one.
Who who is Mearid Power Choice Program Management?
Yes, that's my question too. So the plan is is that we can implement an adder to the cost of electricity, usually that is. A tenth of a cent per kilowatt hour up to maybe a a twentieth of a cent per kilowatt or a tenth. Wait, point one cent or point two cent.
Right, and that's.
Money for the town for someone to administrate administer this, but mayor, I mean, mass power choice and Paul. There are consultants, so they help with a lot, like they have done a huge amount of the work. Already in getting us off the ground and doing things like maintaining, like setting up the website and maintaining the website for us. Um and mailers that go out to people that comes from the the power or the energy supplier that we choose.
Alright, so, and which I understand, but I guess, oh, is that require? The town to create a new position, a new a new department, a new program, what? What does that, what does having main and power choice program management require of the town? In terms of, are we, are we, are we gonna have a an additional employee or part of, you know, a part of an additional employee, right, equivalent, like a. You know, the schools talk about P G, all the equivalents and everything else, so is that how that works, or is it just go to, say, the. You know, the management company that has walked us through and helped us through this, how does that, where does that go, that's gonna be. When people see, oh, I'm giving up, you know, even though it's a a small number, you know, maybe people are gonna wanna know, where is that money actually going? Who's actually, who actually does the power choice program management consist of, what, you know? And I don't, you know, we can answer that at some other point, probably, but that will be a question we'll need to answer at some point.
That is definitely a question we need to answer, we also need to decide how they want that adder to be, um. In an ideal world, I do you see bringing or having someone where this would be part of their, part of their. Job would be to oversee this, um but the Sustainability Committee certainly will take. Some of the load of administering this, and the Sustainability Committee is the entity that's working on this now.
Okay, so it's.
I would be concerned about that, though, because I don't know as if residents are supposed to administer a program. The Sustainability Committee?
No, whoever is identifying this. So I I think when Sally said that it would be personally his job, which is not necessarily referring to the town hallway per se, but it could be a consultant that would contract. And am I mistaken in stating that?
Yes, that's correct, and I will just take a step deeper, so there's a fee that's built in to pay your consultant, happens to be, it could be somebody else who hired, that's part of the, that's part of the price. This second adder we're discussing here would be additional revenue that would go to the town. Communities got to use it to help with the program, what most communities who take this adder do with it. Is they use it to cover the cost, a portion of the cost of an employee who's involved in helping the program. So wouldn't be enough money to, most commonly, to cover someone's entire salary, or would be a contribution towards that?
So within this document, it does not say, that, does it say, or if it doesn't? Should it say that that's, there is a, that you know that. Uh outside agency exists for um, you know, consulting and that type of stuff, and that there's a cost, is it in here?
Right underneath the chart, it says program prices include eight point oh oh one kilowatt hour, that's.
Right, but that, but that.
For an operation.
Right, but that, that, both of those go to.
The consultant.
To the consultant.
Um one would, the other would go to the town, but um. Part of the the reason this is difficult to discuss is that, that that letter that you're looking at will save whatever you decide to do. So if you decide not to have the add up in the town, it wouldn't be in the letter, this is a a representative example of what you might disclose. If if you really disclose what you do, this is a representative example of how you might.
It, right, and I'm not being critical of, you know, your role in this or any of that, I'm just saying that these are the questions that. Will be asked, who who who's paying for that and how, and that's, and and so we'll, we have time to figure that, how that all is gonna play out, but. Okay, so now I understand what the point oh oh one and point oh oh two do and where it goes, and that's fine. And then, you know, how, who and how, from the town side will be worked out as we go forward, and then we also have, um, you know. Your organization as well, so that's that's fine, also, also company, that's okay, does anyone have any other questions?
Yeah, I have I have a question, um are there any other towns in our immediate area who are looking into this possibility? And if so, what are the pathways to uh working with those towns to, you know, seek further efficiencies? In in this kind of, you know, given that we're a pretty small town, you know, and it would be great to to have it more regional rather than just by town.
That's a great question, so um there's over two hundred towns in Massachusetts who have community aggregation in their towns, and this is not, you're. Definitely not the leaders in in going forward with this, um. Uh so um the Sustainability Committee has actually talked to the town of Acton, um when we were first. Getting this going, just to see if maybe it would make sense to join up with them, um. They're at a different stage than us in terms of like, like they have had community aggregation for a significant amount of time. Um and just like when, like they just were going up, or when we had the conversation with them, they were just going up for bids. With a new contractor, so like adding us in wouldn't have worked at that time, so like finding a town or the timing would align might be difficult. So that would be maybe more long term, but another thing Paul explained when we spoke to him was just that. You don't necessarily get a better price if you're a larger town, and I don't know if you wanna speak more to that.
Well, yeah, so that that's exactly right, which is that, which is a little counterintuitive, because most things you buy, the more you buy to lower the price. But electricity purchases don't work that way once you're the size of a town, if you're an individual, so you'd be better opening up with your neighbors. But once you're the size of a town, the variation in places that you see depends more on the nature of the town. When the town tends to use electricity, whether it's at high price times or low price times. And we've seen, for example, that often the city of Boston will go out, this city of Boston does this, they'll go out to bid at the same time. As a bunch of smaller towns, and often the smaller towns get a better price than the city does, just because of the nature of their road, so. In terms of buying electricity, it's not really, um that helpful could be bigger. Once you're once you're a town, it better be a town than an individual, but not better to be ten towns than than one town. Um and as as Sally explained, there may be, I'd like to administrative efficiency things that are grouping up. And that could be a longer term, you know, thing to look at down the road, for the moment, we're kind of caught up in that, different towns are starting to get the hot, so.
One one thing that kind of put me to that same question, because I had the same question, Mike, is if you go from several thousand households to one bargaining unit, you gain a huge. Factor of of several thousand in terms of scale efficiency, but if you're one town to two towns, you're only getting a factor of two, and at that scale with. The bonus of um aggregating the different proposals doesn't, isn't as effective, so it's that thousands to one unit as opposed to, you know, two units into one unit.
Thank you. Alright, um. Yeah, I don't have any other questions for now, does anybody have any other questions? Alright, I don't, is there a motion?
Move to authorize the final preparation of the proposed Community Electricity Aggregation Plan as presented.
And who are we authorizing? I guess the Sustainability Committee, the town administrator, who will we authorize?
Credit with my mom, actually, I have one quick question, the um I forgot, we call it. Introductory, big, when is the, when is like the draft been conducted, when is that done after the thirty day period or during the thirty?
Much later after, not after the state approves the plan, sorry, months and months down the road.
So my my understanding is, to your to your to your question, board, um is that. Uh that that Sustainability Committee, or Paul had to ask for a particular motion that you made, I developed this motion just based on the dialogue that we'd had, and I. And kind of go through these several, probably over some of the by steps of tonight, the board authorizes final preparations, that's just why I extracted from the email. Uh so that's what y'all are proposing, but um my understanding is, it is not yet to be submitted to the state, but correctly if I'm wrong. It is after the thirty day period, right, so we're really kind of giving us a green light. You're you're saying, yeah, continue to make these final preparations, continue on the path you're on. Okay, and then they'll come back, they'll come back and we'll vote to start that thirty day.
Do a present, you'll do a presentation, the public outreach here.
We will, we will do that here, but just for, just to respond to the sit down, so the way you would typically do it is. This authorization will allow the start of that day, you're gonna comment here, finally find out if it's available for public comment. And the part of that is is would be a public presentation of the plan, which often is done at a select board meeting, just so people are paying attention, so that would be that. Twenty minute presentation, and we're going to the details of how this thing might work, to make it easier for folks to comment on it if they.
And the the, sorry, one more time, that the thirty day period starts after this next presentation or within?
Yeah, so with a with an explanation.
With the next presentation, alright, okay.
So, alright, that's fine, um the last question I have, and it just is um. Escapes me now, but whatever.
I I just wanna. I just wanna clarify one thing, because I I think that I heard two different things, so I heard you say that when with this vote tonight. That effectively opens the thirty day. So I just wanna make sure that, and I might have heard it wrong. Right, 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 okay, alright, so, once we.
The thirty day will start with the.
I just wanna make sure that we give people enough time to comment and.
Yeah, whatever, so this, the point of this is just a chance for you to ask all your questions to us before we're making kind of that more public.
I'm sure we'll find more questions for you, Sally, but we'll we'll do our best not to, not to bog it down. The last question I have is, and if you remember it now, is um, whereas we're looking at a couple different review periods, does this require? Uh or any towns required public hearings almost, you know? Have you heard of anyone like, you know, seeking a public hearing to to push this through, or, you know, to pass it, do you know?
I don't know, what you mean, a public hearing on the plan document?
Like tonight, we had the two looking here doing a public hearing, that type of public hearing.
So um not at the town, but so that the the meeting we would discuss here is at the public inform, that we're talking about, not tonight, but. It's more like a public information session. One, it's filed with the state, the state would hold a formal public hearing with a formal notice, and you know, it's part of their review.
They will have a, they will have a public hearing, not in regards to main and specifically, right? They'll just have a public hearing in regards to the program itself.
Well, main as a public hearing on main and specific plan, because you need to file the New York, the county's. Plan with the state, the state needs to review it and approve it as part of that.
Would they hold that public hearing here, would they hold that public hearing at the State House?
In 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 Boston, in their offices, also by Zoom now.
Okay, okay, fair enough, alright, I was I was, I'm I'm listening and I'm looking, and I'm saying, I don't do this without a hearing, but alright, so that's to answer that question. Anything else from anybody for for um Paul and Sally, Sally and Paul? No, alright, so um the vote is basically to um. Request it and authorize these folks in front of us to um carry on. So all those in favor, and for lack of a better term, right, but good luck with it, I look forward to um. You know, seeing seeing where it goes and seeing how it helps everybody.
Thank you both.
Thank you, yeah, thank you for your time.
So I'm good, thank you all.
Thanks, have a great night, thank you. Contact D, contract D, Stantec. Now, I guess, getting it, get comfortable in your seat, Justin.
Who are?
Lightning. Lightning round. Alright, so we're um D, Stantec.
Let's just uh.
Yeah, so Jonathan Markle, Department Director, nice to see you all, um the contract change in front of you and the board tonight. Is for an amendment to our already existing miscellaneous consultant and engineer contract with Stantec represents our consultant. Is for an amendment to our already existing miscellaneous consultant and engineering contract with Stantec represents our consulting firm for both water and sewer. Um, the fact of the contract amendment is that we have this contract set up with cap limits of spending. So we have met that cap limit, so we're looking to move the amendment to, um, not only. Increase the cap limit but to recycle, so really, we've already hit the two hundred thousand, so this is an additional two fifty. But this is a three year cycle, and it's one that we account for in our water and sewer budget. So we've already accounted for this potential increase, um, and then to one of the question, one of the questions I received on Greg Johnson is. Why is it going from two hundred to two hundred and fifty? Because the rates, it's a unique, the unique pricing model. So the rates of our consultants continually rise like everything else with inflation, um, so two fifty gets us the same as two hundreds.
So is it two hundred and fifty over a three year cycle?
That's two hundred and fifty that could, so it's a on-call service, so it's up to two fifty, so it's based on how many times we use that. Over three years, yeah, sometimes, so let's just say, this is a perfect example of why this is happening. Within our three year cycle now for multiple times is. Major policy changes at the EPA and VP level, so that's part of one of the conversations where we look at. Our operational plan and we have addressed that through our G I S coordinator slash, um. Coming to the, uh, like, our G I S slash. So that's just to help offset some of these in turn costs moving forward, but obviously we haven't informed that person yet, um, because our budget hasn't been approved. So this is still in response to major policy changes and not assistance.
Okay, so this three year cycle, it looks like it ends, um, in June of twenty twenty five? So we're in the last year, we'll we'll we will soon be in the last fiscal year of the three year.
Correct, yeah, and it's true, so here's the thing again, the two fifty cap, that doesn't mean the two fifty ends in June, it's just the carryover. So I, we may not use the two fifty within this entire cycle, we may hit it again and have another amendment. Again, it's an on-call service, it's a unit cost service.
Okay.
I have a quick, uh, very probably very easy answer, uh, question to answer, um. The documents that we had in our packet had some questions with some answers. Where did the questions come from?
I want to say the great job.
You made up a question.
I'm your agent, since I ask questions.
No, I I the reason I say that is, I like that, I like.
Okay. Well, I was just, um, I I do everything but word, and sometimes I ask him, I try to catch him, no, I don't try to catch. More more or less, I'm trying to figure out what we're, what I'm asking you to decide.
I I like it because it sort of preps us for what it's all about, so I really don't have any questions.
I will tell you sometimes, David, with this, hopefully you see that I pump up a lot of mammals and I'm.
I also wanted to make sure I didn't miss, even on said, if you have any questions.
No, this one's a cyclical one, it doesn't, it's, it's weird because it is cyclical, but again, it's that unit cost pricing, so if we don't use. The attack on an alarming rate may meaning our water and sewer is moving in a pace, you may not see this amendment again, but then in the entire contract. We're doing a lot of work. Uh, and we also have a lot of significant policy changes in front of us, so.
This isn't a user to you, use it or lose it, though, I mean, it's.
Nope, that two fifty gets there, and it's our on-call, almost like carrying our, uh, town.
But if we had some type of a disaster, we could have an amendment come into force where we say we need to add an extra fifty grand or whatever.
Yeah, and I will say this, so if you notice the rolling process, we have singular contracts for specific projects. This is our on-call consulting service. Most of this work is based on the fact of our. responsiveness to policy requirements and movement process forward and assisting our entire process with that. Or insisting our entire operation with that, you know that we do not have full-time engineering staff. This is the replacement of that for one.
Okay. All right, would anybody like to make a motion? Does anybody have any further questions in regards to contract deed?
I'll move to approve a change order for with Stan Tech for miscellaneous engineering services in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's presented. And authorize use of digital signatures with approval.
Second.
Any further conversation? All in favor? Thank you, sir. Next up is the V H B contract. Have the station that. MS four, yeah.
So a quick overview, um, as you're aware, this is a other engineering support contract, but this is on our DPW side. Represents on highway, fourth park cemetery, store more and such. Um, V H P is under contract with the town, um, to assist our MS four compliance, which is store more compliance, um. We, they assist us mainly with our permit preparation and, um, adhering to those permit requirements. As you know, we've presented in the past, um, several years. Are concerned with, um, funding mechanisms to support the store more process as we go through them for requirements. And as the state and the federal government start to mandate significant policy changes for improvements to so on infrastructure. So with our recent, um, with our recent PowerPoint presentation to the board. We indicated that we would be exploring grant opportunities for, um, funding to conduct the full feasibility study. As you know, we've been piecemealing it with, uh, limited funding resources to try to put a full comprehensive plan on our approach for a store more utility. This change order is some hard work done by, um, my staff and V H B to modify the scope of our original MS four compliance. We really budget engineered what we needed to do to stay in compliance for this budget cycle plus. Um, put together a strong application for a federal grant to help supplement the entire feasibility study. This change order is, uh, a representative of five thousand dollars, but technically we were able to. Maneuver with some scope changes of ten thousand, so it's really a fifteen thousand dollar change, but the overall value of the contract is only a five thousand dollar increase. It kind of spelled it out a little bit in the purpose of understanding why this is the amendment, um, number one versus. The previous scope change that Greg earned you food, which had no value change. So this is, this comes on the back that once we, um, were able to digest the entire R P, the B A three nineteen grant. There was some major hurdles that require some funding mechanisms upfront. One of those in public outreach and education is severe, meaning there is a lot of work via public outreach and education that are the application to receive the advantageous grants. We have to, um, secure a third party, uh, consultant to assist us with that, and we also have to develop a, um, river protection watershed plan. As part of our application. So that's specific to me, and so we're, we're very lucky that this change order, um, only represents five thousand, as I said, we were able to do some scope modifications. Um, but we were also able to allocate some localized excess opera funds. And that's also part of the budget process, so we have the fund for this, um, amendment through our. Halfway twenty four budget, so it's in our halfway twenty four budget, plus the allocated opera funds as, um, secured by Greg.
Okay. Um, anybody have any questions in regards to the V H B amendment number one?
I will move to approve amendment number one to Vanessa Tagan Bristland, Inc., V H B contracts number sixteen. One twenty four point oh one for MS four stormwater management compliance. And EPA three nineteen grant application support in the amount of five thousand dollars as presented, but I'll put a little digital signature.
Second.
Any further questions? All those in favor? Thank you. All right. Amendment two from V H B. Actually, another, another one, and then one traffic signal.
No problem, I was gonna say Justin, David, by the way. As you go out, you can, you can reverse that going forward. Um, so as I explained a little bit with our engineering support for more water and sewer, V H B is our on-call consultant. But when there's specific projects, we have singular contracts to support those projects. This amendment is specific to V H B's design and development, the concrete appase intersection movement. This amendment comes on the fact that we just recently bid out. The overall design development, and as we work through that contract process, which is the next contracts. We have construction administration support, which is a field engineer on site that works with the contractor. This amendment included, uh, which includes seventy five thousand dollars. The reason that this amendment is right in front of the other contract is coordination practice. So once we award bid, we have a pre-con meeting to understand timelines, and that timeline also allows us to understand how much construction administration. Technically, large cities have full-time engineers which can supplement this, we do not. So in order for us to have, um, an engineer on site which does the inspections of the process, this is construction administration, which is not uncovered. So we're looking for a seventy five thousand dollar amendment to the original design development contract. Um, and then you can see the funding mechanism as highlighted in the end of my, um, and the end of my memo. We have funding for this, we secured it in, uh, a couple of different factions, might as well get this now, before I have to be part of the thing of what I vote. As you're aware, in order for us to move this forward, we've kind of positioned ourselves in a multi-phase budget approach, very similar to what we. Seem to consistently do in May or because we don't have a lot of funds, we kind of piecemeal ourselves together. Uh, we were able to secure the five hundred thousand dollar earmark from, um, Eldridge's office in the state of Massachusetts. Which helped pay for the design development, there's some leftover funds, uh, which is going to pay for majority of the construction projects. We also secured in, uh, we're able to, uh, allow fifty eight thousand dollars of local funds from a previous town meeting article. Which is road and sidewalk repairs, which falls right in line with traffic improvement, this intersection improvement project. We also have a dedicated traffic improvement fund, which was mitigation that we received from May or Crossing, which is actually. Um, designed to help with any, uh, situational aspects as part of that overall development that came into traffic improvements, which falls with this. We also have secured. To now, prior to town meeting, um, support from both the select board and the capital committee and the town administrator. For free cash, um, allocation of four hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and thirty six, which is our preferred map, uh, preferred funding metric. Which gives us a balance of one thirty one, seven ninety one, which can account for all of design development, construction administration, and the entire, uh, construction contract. But in case, uh, meeting goes a little wonky, we should have recently with recap. We've also secured pre-approval under our chapter ninety program to supplement this, um, free cash allocation. So we have the funds to move this project one way or another. Our primary goal is to not use chapter and then fund for this intersection. That is why we put together a free cash allocation request. Uh, again, I don't want to speak for the capital committee, that's one of their highest ranked, I don't want to speak for Greg Johnson, he can speak for himself in regards to that. But our goal here is to stick to our chapter ninety plan, which is the pavement.
So I, and I want to, I want to reiterate that for a second, because what you're saying is that, so so everyone understands. We could use chapter ninety, but that means that. Most of the other roads that were supposed to be paved will not get paved.
That means Fletcher, heights, Allen, that means Field Street, that means Elmore Court, that means anything in the future. We would have to wait an entire fiscal year for our another, another two hundred and sixty five thousand, which gets us about a row.
Right, 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 okay, I just want to make sure that that's there for everybody.
Yeah, so our goal is is to defend that free cash allocation, uh, this is a strong project, I think, one that has. Extreme amount of support from May or this whole, um, but we just wanted to make sure we move process, a lot of this was. Um, that we wanted to get this contract bid in the winter into the spring to secure ideal pricing, which we have. So we've secured ideal pricing with a base bid in all our ad alternates under our estimates. Uh, so we want to keep this this process moving as we, um, were able to secure advantageous bids. Uh, so we just positioned ourselves with a couple of different, um, authority allowances, but what we're looking for now is. The approval of the construction administration and then prior to the next contract, I believe on board ops would be the full construction.
Okay, would anybody like to, um, make a motion on the amendment number one, traffic signal?
Will to approve amendment number one to Vanessa Hangan Bristland Incorporated, V H B contract. One two two nine three point six four for additional engineering and construction administration services in the amount seventy five thousand dollars. As presented, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
I'm second, anybody have any further questions before we take a vote? Having one, all of them, David?
My kids love to watch this show, it's like a bathing show.
Real cake. Yeah, okay, you've heard of it. Um. All right, so next up is the Harding Traffic Signal Contract. By the way, I know that there's been a lot of work going on at that intersection, and it's sad to say it has nothing to do with the lights.
That is one hundred percent correct.
Want to the most, I don't want to hear about the other thing.
Okay, if you want, I can give us that out.
No, 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 this is, this is enough.
All right, so as part of the construction administrator, you're aware that we have a full design development for a major improvement of one of our. Uh, most dangerous, if not our most dangerous, um, pedestrian intersection, pedestrian particular, uh, intersection. Uh, concrete active haze, uh, we went through the design development process, we had public input, we had cycle input. We came up with a, um, very efficient and effective plan, and also included a number of ad alternates to expand. Some of the limits of the original, um, intention of that project, um, to actually increase, um, safety along the corridor of that street. So we were lucky, as part of our overall plan, we were able to kind of describe adjusting. We wanted ideal prices, so we wanted to bid at the winter, we were really on on the forefront of securing their pricing. We were, um, very lucky to see that we were able to secure pricing of seven hundred and sixty five thousand, seven sixty two forty two. For the entirety of our base plan, which is the entire intersection plus our ad alternates, which actually enhance a lot of pedestrian improvements. Along back and street and then actually. Move over to the intersection of the concrete act and haze, which is saying intersection, but it's like right next to the cat, cat bar. So we're able to incorporate all of them, and we're happy to say we can award the entire, um, design development plan with all that alternates. Um, within our spending cap. And we actually are very happy to see that I W Harding was able to win our bid. Um, if you're unfamiliar, I W Harding was the construction contractor that did our complete streets project on Glendale and Culver. Um, they did a fantastic job, um, in a neighborhood that is tight and hard to maneuver, and they were very, um. They were very good with our residents, they were tanned and hands, they were very respectful of the approach. Again, this is going to be another location that's hard for residents to truly understand, it's going to be a significant amount of detours. There's a lot of density in that location, which will come with, um, great sensitivity. So we're happy to see that the same contract that was able to perform those same processes in Glendale is going to be performing those processes in contract and haze. Uh, and we're hoping to get that, uh, project rolling immediately, uh, once this contract's approved, they can start ordering, um, material. They're waiting on us there, our anticipation, if contract is approved, to have the majority of the construction done, uh, prior to fall. There is already material delays, if you're unfamiliar with industry, steel is still a significant delay, even off of COVID. Um, and we have a mass government, which will most likely be a, uh, four to six month timeline. Uh, but it could be up to twelve months, so.
This funding source that's included in here, um, from free cash is the same funding, it's not in addition to.
Correct, yeah, I just wanted to kind of get, so very similar to how we had to track. A little bit with the multi, multi-phase for a treatment plan process. Again, this is sensitivity to some of the questions you had previous with that, with my memos with those is, I wanted you to have a full picture of our entire budget. And our entire process and all the funding mechanisms, um, and then as we move forward. I want to say that we have a very strong design, but it's not uncommon to have some change orders. I will start to track each one individually, so you'll see the overall budget, but you'll see we combine very similar to what we see phase one, phase two, one, four. So we're tracking better, the entire project.
Give me a ignorance on this one, what's the A R P A spending bill earmarked, what's A R P A?
So, yes, the American covered.
Right, yeah.
American investment plan act, and the town was given like three million dollars, which the great majority went to support water and structure. There was, and I mean like, not very much left over, so to speak, um, and it's kind of miscellaneous, although most of it had been. Um, endorsed by the select board otherwise to go to help, right, so so we were going to hire, uh, health director, health nurse, um, which is great. There's still. A little bit left over, which I decided not to promise all to Steve Silverstone, because odds and ends like. This stuff, which is, which was the original intention of ARPA was to like support infrastructure improvements and whatnot, and that's business like small compared to like the great. Projects, um, but because we had a devoted. Um, there was some sort of, not left over, so to speak, but like there was some that had not yet been committed. And I I don't mean a lot, like some, and we still have to spend that money by December twenty twenty four, so.
So, but isn't this ARPA earmarked, isn't this the one that's like the federal one? Or from the state, like from Jamie Oliver.
I can correct, so Greg's talking about MS four. So we had local share. I apologize, and this was state share of a fund, so to Greg's point, though. Yeah, I was, we just a little town received over three million dollars direct to the town mayor. Which we're able to move a significant amount of that for our wealth oriented project, which actually reduced our rate obligations on all, as all. This was, the state also received our, so it was a federal. This was, the state also received our, so it was a federal, federal bill, the state also received GRO funding. And we were able to work, um, actually Greg, I will say we're very hard with Jamie because this was I remember this earmark clearly was day. Um, to secure the five hundred thousand, Jamie was able to earmark the state's, a portion of the state's ARPA. Direct payment to.
You're always confused, because Justin had made reference to the same ARPA, different fund, like from two contracts before.
Good.
I will say, as an industry, we're still in the COVID, we're just getting through. I'm just fulfilling all of our, we're actually just starting to exhaust all of our.
So would anybody like to make a motion?
I will move to approve the contractor IW Harding for the construction of the new traffic signal and related improvements. On the intersection of Route twenty-seven and Concord Street in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-two cents. As presented and authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further questions? All those in favor? If we move on to um, contract H, if you would like to just give us the briefest explanation of what took place in that intersection this past week, go ahead.
Alright, so, as part of our big contract, if you have not ever dealt with EverSource, Justin, you're probably going to be very familiar with this. So EverSource is our gas and electric utility provider for the town. We have sole source, we don't have natural grid, we work for EverSource. As a DPW, we provide five-year forecasting of what our work processes are and we provide five-year more touring. So when I work previously, what's meaning? In our five years, if I paved a great road last year, EverSource is not allowed to dig that road up. And then we provide our projected road layouts, whether it's paving, construction, et cetera. In advance so that EverSource can plan properly, while EverSource is in a grid. So, um, they are well aware that we were doing this process, because we're in full design development, we do this on a cyclical annual basis. And um, probably about three weeks prior to bid, EverSource panicked. Saw the bid on comp buys, came to us and said, we messed up. We really need to do the gas in this intersection as part of our overall leak detection post the issue that we had on Park Street. This was slated, we're not sure why they didn't get into the, um, process in advance of your project. Is it possible for us to pre-coordinate in advance of this project? Due to the timing that our select board meetings are in our contracts, administration and some material delays. We had EverSource go in front of this contract, right in front of this project. One, obviously there's a public safety issue, when I, when I'm asked the, the way on these issues, I always look at the public safety implications. Two, it's two years after this intersection, that starts leaking, then it's gonna be very hard for me to say no. And then we're gonna have an intersection that's half done. So, when you have large-scale. Public works projects, you may have heard me talk about this before, is yeah, well, we refer to women in the industry as a full recon or full reconstruction. We don't have the funding for full reconstruction projects, while reconstruction projects typically are all underground utilities in advance of surface improvements. We try to do the best we can with the funding we have. To it, to look at our water and sewer in advance and we coordinate with our utilities often to try to come up with what I like to say is a piecemeal. Recon, we're comfortable with our water and sewer utility, we did some advanced water and sewer utility improvements there over a year ago. EverSource, um, unfortunately dropped the ball, but we're able to fit them in the timeline. Uh, and a lot of their public outreach was explained to me. So, I'm hoping that it happens because EverSource does have their own public outreach process. They're supposed to be calling their customers in advance, very similar to our hyper reach. I required that they put the digital signs in place and coordinate with MPB. Uh, and that public outreach was supposed to be done by EverSource, so I'm hoping it happened. I hear some rumblings of, I didn't know, I, I know, but I didn't know. Um, but the idea behind it is to get in front of right projects and not create delays, which would drive up our.
Alright, thank you. Now, H, Winston, you'll lose.
Alright, so, this is a change order as part of our phase two project at our water treatment plant. And the guy indicated that we should be seeing a slight decline or a continuing block decline in change orders as the project is coming to final completion. Uh, this change order is a number of minor change orders that equate up to ninety-one thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars. I mean, I know that's not minor money, but when you're talking about the project scale, that's, these are, these are close-up processes. Um, that include a number of um, potential um, upgrade changes. That were indicated, I did not bring the scope, um. But I believe a lot of them had to do with some facility modifications as part of the adoption process, or the adoption process of our treatment upgrades. Uh, so I'm just looking for approval of this uh, change order, I do, excuse me, I do anticipate. Uh, two more change orders, uh, but each one is probably one change order and it has to come with some timing delays. As the contractor's trying to fulfill their contract, they're trying to get final completion. The next two change orders that we uh, believe may take place is we have some drainage issues as part of, um, as part of upgrades. That we need to modify with conservation, so we're working a little bit with our permanent modifications. Uh, that, that is holding up our payment process for the roadway going in. And then the final one, which I believe is the final change order, is our building operation control system. The one that we had in place that was over fifteen years old, is not capable of handling all the modifications, it's not running properly. So it's the commission aspect of a candidate system. Uh, so, so we've been working with our electrical engineers to try to clear that up, see if we could have done repairs to our system, but it's all too. So, it didn't be changed up.
Okay, now my question, uh, it's already budgeted for, uh, and then the second question is, including the two. Change orders that you mentioned that will be coming down the road. Uh, where will we fall on overall cost of project versus budget?
So, as, um, if you approve this change order right now, I could.
Assuming we approve this one and the two that you mentioned.
So we're still looking um, at roughly anywhere between a half a million to seven hundred fifty thousand dollars under budget.
Great. Any other questions? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve change or. Number six. PC was zero to four, two five, two six. Two seven, two eight, two nine, thirty, ten thirty-one, with Winston Builders Corporation for the Well Foray Treatment Plant. Water, water treatment plant upgrades. Phase two construction contract number one thirty-seven six, in the amount of ninety-one thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars as presented, authorized to use a digital signature if approved.
Second. Alright, any further questions for Mr. DeMarco? All those in favor? Thank you, Justin. I see him, I see him, I see him.
You want to make us so popular with people?
You know, by virtue of, by virtue of the fact that several of us have sat through this next discussion several times. I understand exactly what it's gonna be, but with the range we've had and all the flooding and all the nonsense. No one else in town is gonna understand why we're having this discussion, but I'll leave it to you to discuss, tell us what we're gonna do. And what restrictions are gonna be in place for our water use this, this summer season.
Yeah, so Chris, to your point, I understand um, the confusion behind why there would be a water ban versus. What you see through precipitation, but unfortunately, as part of our water act, which is a twenty-year permit, it requires, matter what.
Because our usage is over a certain amount, correct?
No, so technically we're at the low use, so there's two thresholds, yeah, we're under sixty-five. But even it is phenomenal like in serving water, yet we still have a water capacity problem, which is dangerous, that's why it's so dangerous. Um, no, we're actually on the lower tier, so as users, we average about fifty-one to fifty-seven gallons per day. If the industry got purpose, excuse me, per day, the industry is one time. So Maynard is a significant conservation process, but no, this is due to the sheer fact of the aquifer for which we withdraw our water. So the aquifer is the Concord River basin, which produces about seventy-five percent of the water, is a stress basin. No matter what, they allow too many straws. So, a lot of this has to do with controlling that aquifer beyond just uh, recharging precipitation. That's also why when you put on a new well source, it takes about four to five years to terminate, because a lot of that is research and it's the aquifers that you're tapping into. So that being said, this is part of our twenty-year permit, you need to get used to it, it is what it is. Um, and actually, it's most likely going to change even after twenty years. Because of the sheer fact of urban, urban sprawl, so the aquifer doesn't move, it's a natural occurring aquifer. As urban sprawl moves in more towns like us, Concord Act and, accents in Lincoln, Sudbury. They keep town in straws, we all share the same aquifer, it's going to um, still have to do with conservation processes. I will tell you, without going into too much detail, like beyond the scope of this, that is why phase two was focused on Rockland. Rockland is not in the Concord River basin, it is not in that same aquifer, which is why town mayor explored Rockland as an alternative. Like pond and using, it's also why our phase two was highly focused there, so when we're talking about growth. You could argue, even though we put well foray on, this is very high level, but we put well foray on. Our permit didn't change for our land's withdrawal, it just added redundancy to our system, because it's in a stress basin. Rockland, if we do find well sources, we have one well source we already know about, but we're exploring more than just one well opportunity over there. We are most likely going to apply to increase our mass state demand, which will allow agent flexibility. Not only the straw, the straw, pulling water on the ground, but our permanent allowance, which will then result in growth. Whether we choose as a community to take it or not, we're not inhibited by our water. We're talking about community wants, which needs. Um, but all of this ties back to the sheer fact of where our water comes from in the stress basin, so that's part of our permanent withdrawal. And they make some quick modifications, some feedback I received from one of the, our commissioners. Um, our permit requires that we only allow two days, it does not require days. Our operational constraints were highly focused, the reason that we picked the two weekend days last year is we shared back to enforcement. We don't have staff work on Saturdays and Sundays, we do have water staff that works on Saturday and Sunday specifically for the treatment. Meaning they're treatment operators, but it's only usually one operator that runs all three treatments. Um, so enforcement is a little dangerous game, but we're willing to make modifications, because at the same time. We're going to adhere by policy, but we also are a service. So if our customers want this, we're willing to explore that opportunity. If we see variations or there's policy issues and abuse, then we can explore the opportunity modifications. For, um, we just cleaned up a little bit of the language, I hope that helps. Um, other than that, it's our yearly, it's here to stay, and I'm not gonna lie, in twenty years, it's probably gonna get worse.
Yay, okay.
Just to be fair, we didn't just build redundancy, we didn't, so as part of the overall plan, um. We were to make, we continue to have water if something breaks down and as part of this.
So, yeah, just, you're not on. So it wasn't just redundancy, what happens, the, the real, I, I like to explain the real simple, we have a big glass of water, yeah, it's only straw. The straw getting empty an entire glass of water, but DEP allows us to hold the empty half. And depending on how many straws we have in there, we actually, our permit has multiple wells that fail, but they still hold them against us. So that's part of the redundancy we have, wasn't just redundancy to provide extra straws in case we're trying to balance. It was also to replace a failed well, but that still counts against this in the permanent process, so that's really where. But my idea of why we're moving to phase two, why explain, not just my idea here, but why our approaches. We're looking to enhance that, not only from a redundancy, but to increase our max state demand, which would allow for larger scale.
Yeah, I'm not gonna remember all that, but my neighbor wants to know why he can't wash his car on Tuesday, so.
So, and, and we're good with the essential out of the outdoor water, the municipal Saturdays and Wednesdays, does that sound? That, well, that's what it says, so, I just want to make sure that that, um.
Chris, though, advise to your neighbor, as a Turk manager, the best time to water your grass. Before dawn or after dusk, that's also why it's like that, for evaporation purposes, so. As a paying customer, that said neighbor may not want to irrigate at noon, as a minimum effect.
I thought that was because no one could see him, but that's okay.
And I would ask that we make sure that our school department. And our fire department and our police department all adhere to the same rules that residents are asked to adhere to.
So, as part of that, just know there is exemptions to that law for a permit, so firefighting, fire safety is always.
But I don't mean, but you can't.
Technically, I, I don't write in our regulation, but they are exempt, same as public parks, but I will, we, we manage the irrigation systems on behalf of the school. We manage those at the early hours, so just like you heard the electric. Uh, PPA conversation, there's peak demand for water usage, a lot of that, part of the hour restrictions is to avoid. Um, it's the stress on our system, so typically, no matter what, when we irrigate our athletic fields, we do it on dawn and dusk. Um, because most people.
You, you should be doing it those times, but. It's, it's a little disconcerting for some when you drive by, by alumni field on your way to get your lunch and they get the water. At like, you know, midday, it's not.
All, all the repairs, yes, so when those, no, they are, so when those happen, those are typically.
Okay. I, I, I'll win one, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit there and go like this and see who's fixing what, that's alright.
So that builds a head identification for irrigation purposes, so the only way to identify heads.
At, at least I won't be standing over it like at the golf course when they turn the water on, so that's okay. But, um, okay. Thank you, Justin, for that explanation of the water restrictions, um, would somebody like to make a motion when we get to the water, seasonal water restriction?
Move to implement declaration seasonal water use restriction pursuant to the Town's Maynard Water Management Act. Permit special condition, six seasonal limits on non-essential outdoor water use. Hereby granting designate or designate authority to the Department of Public Works Director to implement restrictions processes. Effective May first, twenty twenty-four.
Does anybody have any further questions for Mr. DeMarco?
Are, are we going to have some type of, if we haven't already, uh, an announcement to the community somehow to.
Once you pass.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Signs are typical signs that are required, and they still use old-school metrics, so we still have to put out metal signs.
Alright, second, um, was seconded? There's no further questions, are there? All those in favor? My neighbor asked, I'm just, I gotta repair, I gotta repair. Yeah, sure. You okay, we want to, I don't, I don't, I don't wear. Let's go out of order and get to the correspondence item number thirteen. I'm gonna have to make a motion when we get to correspondence.
Uh, I had a comment about correspondence.
Yeah, well, we have to make a. We gotta make a motion and get a second first, and then we'll, we'll take your comments, Mike.
So I'm going to accept and approve of uh, or correspondence since A through C, Ash.
Second.
Hey, Mike, you're up.
Um, yeah, this is with regard to the second item. On the uh, the Maynard for Palestine, uh, Maynard Ceasefire Resolution. Um, and I, I just want to thank the group for engaging in this matter and their refusal to ignore the humanitarian disaster that's. Currently evolving in Gaza, um, and their quest to raise public awareness. And calls for political action through the democratic process in support of solutions that will try to limit the scale of violence and suffering in that region. Um, on a personal note, I too am horrified by what we witnessed on news from far. And encourage any initiatives that lead toward more peaceful resolutions in Gaza, Israel and the region. Um, okay, I do personally support the general intent of this draft resolution. Even if I might debate some of the finer points of the word. Many questions arise from a discussion of this nature. Is it truly the role of a select board to take on matters of foreign policy? When we have our own immediate, if more perhaps mundane problems to deal with? What of other armed conflicts around the world? There are over a hundred at this time, many involving US funding and military support. Do we not also have a moral obligation to consider them, given the terrible toll of civilian lives lost in them too? Is there a risk that a debate in Maynard of this nature leads to serious division that would distract from other matters? Is there a risk that a debate in mained of this nature leads to serious division that would distract from other matters of importance to the town? For my part, I believe that a small town such as ours can indeed enter into these issues. Even if they seem so remote at first glance from the daily routines of Maine. The people of Israel, Gaza, and other Palestinian territories are directly subject to decisions made here in the U S. And our citizens have every right to seek change through peaceful and democratic means. The billions of dollars being spent on massive destruction of civilian life could, for example, be spent on rebuilding infrastructure, education, or healthcare. Much as many of us are proud of our town, we're still inextricably linked with other communities, both locally and globally. These are my personal views, which I'm prepared to share. However. I do believe it would be a mistake for the select board to vote on a resolution such as this. Without the inclusion of much wider representation from the town. When people voted for each of us, they entrusted us with making decisions such as we have seen tonight. Uh among other things, public works, public safety, tree planting, and the education of our children. Discussion foreign policy was probably not on people's minds when deciding who to vote for on the select board. A resolution such as proposed here would ring somewhat hollow unless first debated and then supported by a greater proportion of citizens of Maine. Other than the five of us and maybe a dozen or two dozen people who we have seen part of this group. There are various outlets for this to happen, of course, a citizen's position, a petition for one. Or perhaps even a select board vote, as has happened in an increasing number of towns throughout Massachusetts and and the nation. Those who truly want the town to make a collective statement of intent to the U S government. Should seek to ensure a wider inclusion so as to make any potential resolution genuinely authentic and meaningful. If residents of the town choose to seek further engagement. Then I am confident that we can model the attributes of thoughtful, respectful, and peaceful conflict resolution. That we so desire around the world. Uh so that's my observation on uh this resolution.
Thank you for that, Mike. Typically. Uh when we receive a correspondence, just for the record. We don't act on correspondences um the first time through. Typically, we take something like this and um create an agenda item. If that was the board's will further down the road. And then have a broader discussion. Along the lines of what Mike just spoke about and several of the points that he made. Insofar as um more community involvement, more community participation. Um and certainly, you know, the um. The letters that I think we've always received from many of the people that are on Zoom and some of the people in the room, I believe. Um were, you know, received um in the um. You know, with the goodwill in which they were offered to us and and we read them all. And I think that, you know, there's a lot of. Uh thought provoking information within some of the letters. And lead us all to um, you know. Come to some of the same conclusions that Mike so eloquently voiced tonight. So I think, and um unless anybody on the board has a strenuous objection. Um I think that we will um. Add this to a future agenda for for, you know, the discussion and and discuss. Some of the points that Mike has, and Mike, if you don't mind. I think it would be a a. Good gesture and an important gesture to take your words and enter them into the minutes of the meeting. If I, if anybody, if anybody, if anybody doesn't, if you don't object, Mike. I like to, I like to have, like, I think because. From my standpoint, I I think it captures very well the way most of us feel up here. And um and that's where I like to go, and then we'll put. The uh mained for Palestine ceasefire resolution. Onto a future agenda, which is our our practice. And and start the conversation, and I do appreciate um. You know, all the information I received from everybody.
They had gotten to us and I'm.
Excuse me. I I'm not accepting public comments right now.
It's just a mistake.
Yeah, you know. But anyway, um so that's, that's. You know, unless that's not the will of the board, and that's kind of the direction I think that we typically take when we get a um. A correspondence that obviously requires further conversation and action on our part. So have you been okay with that? Close of action? Okay, so so we will, we will, Greg, so Greg, I I spoke to Greg this afternoon. And he has had indicated that he had spoken to a couple of people that um. I believe represents the the group director that I've been in contact with this time. Okay, so so. We'll, I'll talk to Greg, we'll we when we formulate the agenda, and I'll have Greg reach out so that you guys are all aware of um. What we're doing and where we, as we move forward in this conversation, it's very important conversation, that we keep you guys apprised of what we're. When we're planning, what we're planning to do. And I apologize for keeping you guys waiting.
Right, we're gonna have to just vote on it.
We're voting, we're voting to accept the correspondence. No, 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 I know, and it's it, so Mike, Mike brought it up, so it just led to a little bit of a. And and so, yeah, very much appreciated the um the letters of support, the information we received. Uh very informational, very, very thought provoking some. So um we look forward to having a further, it's got a further discussion on this. But in the meantime, um the motion's been made, it's been seconded, all in favor of accepting the three correspondence items. Great, and so we'll we'll be in contact and um let you know. When we're, when we're, and it won't be, it will be soon, um. You know, okay. Thank you, have a great night. Thank you, thank you for coming.
We're waiting.
Yeah, and waiting. All right, um now we're on to the um. Steve, you're up. H C A of application Rivers National Health. Good evening.
Good evening. Evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. My name is Char Rivers, so much.
Uh uh, can you say it's Char?
Char Rivers.
Okay, Char, glad to have you. All right, you're you're welcome to, welcome to join us. We're happy to have you, um. All right, Steve, let us know what we're doing.
Uh Steve Cloverstein, Executive Director in Municipal Services, I have the same pleasure of uh. Uh coming to you with a request for to begin negotiations for a host community uh agreement. Uh on behalf of the applicant Char Rivers, doing business as Rivers Leaves of Natural Healing. Char is seeking this H C A to begin negotiations with the town uh to. Uh begin a cannabis, start a cannabis dispensary, which will be located at forty two Main Street. Uh here in downtown, we will downtown. Uh and at this point, I'll let Char discuss, uh you know, give an overview. He does have a PowerPoint if you are in so inclined. Which has been pretty.
Do we, do we have a copy of it? Cause most of us could, cause um, cause most of us can just bring it up. Do you wanna bring it up?
Can I also give a little bit of extra context? And I appreciate um Steve kind of giving that review. The the. Our standard practice here in town has been that we um. We sort of like, we get an application for an H C A with a potential establishment, and then. Um there's a little bit of vetting on on town staff, but not too much, it's pretty service level. Um unless more, you know, circumstances warrant otherwise, and then it goes to the, um, devotee, maybe just for like a quick little blessing, because they advise the town administration. And then if everything seems on the up and up, then we come to where we are this evening, so we bring it to the board. And this is a, so I just wanna emphasize, still very much in this sort of beginning stages, but it is developing relationships, so. You will have a a potentially um a legal relationship with this particular establishment if it gets that far. And so I just kind of want to emphasize that's what we're really kind of doing. It's like, you're. Are are you, like, what what is the basis of this?
The upcoming dispensary, um so our mission statement is we're, we're trying to um. Provide the most user-friendly um experience in the dispensary. Have a great experience coming into the dispensary, if you don't mind, um scoring ahead to the. Bullet points there, great, thinking. So we have a a nice, large um variety of cannabis products available, um that'd be flour, edibles. Uh concentrates, um different products that are, you know, available for the. Consumers, and we want to make sure to provide a affordable pricing. Um and emphasize also that it's a, it's a welcoming store. We wanted to to look inviting, and so that's where I'm hoping to really play up the um. The the ambiance by having uh it decorated with Native American art pieces. I am a Native American ancestry on both sides of my family, um pretty strongly on my father's side, so I really wanted to. Um decorate the store with a lot of different cultural art pieces that would both serve to decorate the store as well as be available for sale. I feel like that might help to um make it more of a good fit for the cultural. Um surroundings of Maine, and this is a very strong uh community with great. A lot of pride and some cultural respect. Um, we can just go to the next slide. So briefly about me, Char Rivers, I'm the company owner and I'm new to the business world and have a long um. Uh career background in psychology, and that's where, and basically my expertise comes into place. I have. A long history of working in medical community and education and residential facilities and with um. Very diverse populations, and hopefully that will help to come into play in the business world and and working to find some of the dispensary. So the location is forty two Main Street, as we've mentioned, um you have a signed lease with the owner, and we have a five-year lease um. And it's an existing building, it's right in the part of Main Street, so it should have a lot of foot traffic, which would be great. Um hoping it's gonna bring a lot of revenue to the town, and um we also. Um, yeah, we have a five-year agreement with the with the property, and that owner is on board with the B dispensary, that's. Part of the details we already worked out and just part of the lease. So just a little um highlights on the cannabis market. So I I feel like it's uh important to really emphasize that there is a really strong demand for cannabis in the area. Especially with um here being one of the few towns in the area that allows it. I feel like having another dispensary will be um. A great asset to the community and bring a lot of revenue and foot traffic. Um thirty-five percent of Massachusetts residents have consumed cannabis in the past year. It's a really strong figure. Um supporting again the demand for the service and and the store, especially in in. Consideration of the surrounding towns, which are separate, reformed, um and even active having, you know, tighter restrictions. Um than Maine, I know there is the medical use in that, but there, uh they don't have a recreational. That that Maine does offer, and so there are a lot of um surrounding towns that would really be bringing in um more people to the town. Um and there's um. The town, North Hampton, actually has quite a few dispensaries, twelve in fact, uh currently, plus I checked. And they are generating millions in revenue as a result of that, so I just noted that's something that's probably on your mind is. Having other dispensary in town, um and how that might affect things, but um North Hampton is a great example of where that's really um. Flourished in the revenue that that's available for that town, and that may be something that we could really um. Take advantage of too is the revenue that comes in from dispensaries and the demand for them. So um to the target market, um particularly in Maine, and this upcoming dispensary, I'm hoping that you will approve. Um I'm hoping to really again emphasize how there are um so few towns in the surrounding areas that. That are allowing dispensaries and how that uh really highlights that more revenue will be brought to Maine via that increased foot traffic. Um and I'm really hoping to also um play up the small town feel of Maine, it's it's such a wonderful. Uh feeling to walk through down, walk down Main Street and have all those small shops and just be able to. Get a really a a great player for the great cultural uh influences that are part of this town, I'm really hoping to add to that. And so hoping that um having the uh warm, colorful, inviting um. Storefront will help to to really draw the into that cultural um significance of the town. And so hoping that, you know, we'll have the small town um. The feel really vibe in that town, in that store that I'm hoping to bring to the community. And I'm hoping that that foot traffic will be brought into the store as well as bringing revenue, revenue to the town. And really drawing um people of diverse backgrounds with different budgets and different. Um interest in both cannabis and just in in culture and and the small town feel. Next slide please. So uh what sets um this upcoming dispensary apart from others is that it's independently owned, it's a small business. Only shop, so it's not, it won't have that um corporate feel that other dispensaries might have. And also would have more flexible pricing and availability options. Um as it doesn't have all of that corporate oversight and and um as well as financial demands that. That larger companies might have, so I'm hoping that by being a small kind of independent business, being being warranted with the. Demands of the town and the consumers that are in Maine specifically, as opposed to more generally speaking. Um and and more like, um you know, instead of having that corporate corporate cookie cutter feel, I want people to feel like more invited to come in and. And see what we're all about and get to know us, and I really feel like it's a welcoming, welcoming environment um. So people can feel like they really wanna come back and and get to know us and be really a part of the town. Um and I'm I'm really hoping that also that having those um Native American art pieces will help to to emphasize that. I uh I'm actually a part of the North American Indian Center of Boston, and so I have a few artists in mind that I'm working on. Um having them bring in art pieces to the store and as well as I'd also like to have a large mural commission. To go across the storefront, so that that way, as after vibes, uh you know, as the traffic passes by the store. They'll be able to look at a nice warm and writing, colorful mural, as opposed to having a glass blacked out or having to worry about. Um underage uh pedestrians, you know, looking into things that might not be appropriate for that age. So I feel like that those things will really uh set us apart in the overall um look of the store and feel of the the store. Um and in a practical um speaking, you know, cost-effective basis, another thing that sets us apart is I happen to be um. And an accepted member of the social equity program through the Massachusetts Cannabis Commission. Um and as a uh member of this, then it gives a lot of benefits such as um an X wave. Uh process in the application through the state, once the um hopefully most community agreement is approved. It also allows a lot of the waivers and reductions over time, which will again also trickle down to. The um benefits to the everyday customer and then I'm able to provide lower uh costs and lower um. Prices for the um with the uh products that are available in the store due to the cost savings that will be. Um uh available through the cannabis commission, social equity program. Um, it makes sense. Uh sorry, one little thing that it wasn't on the slide before we skip to this, another thing I'm hoping to also have is a. A display case in the store, which I'm working with the art technique um that I have on the project. To incorporate a way in which we could have like a visual blast display case that will show the products. As opposed to, I don't know how familiar you might be with dispensaries, but often when they go in, it's it's prepackaged product, and we're not even gonna see it until we're all prepared. So I'm hoping by having a display case in the store, we'd be able to have products securely in last display cases. But also a part of working that into a more inviting art piece to where we're. Again, trying to move away from that cookie cutter corporation feel, having that more of an independent feel, looking at what we're getting and. And making the customer feel like they're more important to to make them feel like they're getting something that they're happy with, as opposed to a. A take it or leave it feel with those free package items that you can't see hard to purchase. Thank you for backing up, we'll go to the next slide. So um this is a copy of the survey, um that was designed to show more of the location. Um and the surrounding areas of of where this location is on the street. And then uh this is. The uh storefront and and like. More of a zoom out of the location, provided by the architects, have a more visual of what we would expect. Um, of course, it'd be a lot more detail and we might um, that mural also will be a strong component of that. And this is the proposed um, plan from the architect that that incorporates the highlighted spaces, the store, and then the rest of it, of course, is the the property that won't be utilized for the actual surface, but is actually part of the existing one. And then we have a lot of security uh, plans in place, which of course will um, get approved through the police department, see that they're on there, um, okay, and what we have literary uh, outline, which is a um, a dozen security cameras, which will be placed strategically to see all of the entrances, exits, um, um, and as well as the default and storage areas and these over the registers and other um, important areas. And again, we're getting approval on those locations prior to installing them. Um, there will, there will be um, security services onsite and delivery and deposit dates. We'll all be fine and make sure everything's stored appropriately and aligned the um, with emissions regulations. Um, and they will, there'll be definite monitoring of the exits and exits. And um, I'm sorry, entrances and exits, and we'll make sure that's all approved before we move forward. So as as far as identity diversion measures and fourth ballot, the ID will be necessary to enter and be checked. There will be a door that you'll um, have you, that will be secured prior to um, having that ID checked. So we'll come in the main door, we have our ID check, and then once it's checked, we'll be best able to go into the actual dispensary itself. Uh, you will have uh, the appropriate software in place to be able to track the customers' sales and make sure that their purchases are in line with the state regulations. And of course, virtual work is keeping to um, again, keeping ensuring that if that customers are not um, buying anymore then uh, they are legally allowed to do so. And we will um, also, of course, keep in mind the video surveillance of all parts, while customers are in the store. And we will, of course, run all of these identity diversion measures through the uh, police department, make sure with their um, in line with with their expectations as well. So our financial security, um, so just um, next to me again, so we we already have the existing uh, lease on of of the property. And the rent has been three gig and that significantly. Um, we also, because of the relationship with the Cannabis Commission Social Equity Program, it's extremely reduced call um, as the entire application fees completely waived. Um, so that really uh, adds to the financial security of the business. On top of that, I uh, I currently have a um, a property that I'm in the process of selling which has significant equity, which will add to the financing of the business. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you.
Yes.
Questions? Thanks.
Uh, yeah, uh, welcome. Um, thank you for choosing Maine and being interested in our community. One of the things that has frustrated me over some of our other uh, dispensary is that they, they have, I think, to a person that came in, spoke always about the community aspect and how they want to keep it local and they want to do with it, and then they sell out to a national chain. Um, um, we had Rise down the street that sold someplace in Chicago. And when they came in here and sat with us, they said many of the same things that you said about wanting to be involved in the community and wanting to be, you know, active with the community, et cetera. What guarantees can you make to us that that won't happen with you?
Well, I've actually been a longstanding member of the community for a while now. I pretty easily lived in Maine and I currently live in Southbury. So uh, my son has actually been a voice scout in Maine for about eight years now. He's currently a senior, so he's uh, of the best dependents honestly in the senior year. But previously had been regularly attending every weekly meeting at the Maine or Voice Scouts for since past eight years. So we have um, been a part of this community for so long. I don't foresee moving anytime in the near future. We've lived in Southbury for um, four and a half years, as I mentioned just before that, we were in Maine. So so we're local and I find it to stay here. My children are in high school here and I don't want to move. I I like the community, which is why I specifically chose Maine. And I feel like it's a great fit because I want to be close to where my kids are in school and be able to do business here. So I don't foresee moving anytime in the near future. I I hope to really keep this a small family operated business and hopefully in time maybe add another location or two if everything goes well. But I really would like to keep this a small family owned business.
Thank you. And the the other question I have is the property right now. Um, when I saw that it was on the agenda, I walked by the location. Is it currently a residential location?
So interestingly enough, it actually is a zone for dual purpose. And it has a um, residential and business zoning. So in the back of the location, there's actually a full apartment, because as again, it's zoned as such. And with the architectural plan, as you could see in the plan, it shows that apartment right behind it. So the plan is to put a dividing wall between the apartment unit and the um, anticipated retail space, which again is what it's zoned for, and that the architect has uh, thoroughly researched to make sure it's in line with all of the regulations of Maine.
Um, from a legal perspective or whatever, and I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know. You can answer. Uh, typically, um, you know, discussions we've had, there's always been some concern about residential uh, proximity to a marijuana distribution location. What's the, what's the mission with with that in this situation?
So as start that you you're correct, it's a zone specifically live work. Um, so there is the the residence uh, that is a part of the unit. We spoke with town council about the very question, because obviously, you know, it's brings to thought. Uh, and they said there are no clear restrictions. If it's zoned for live work, then there's no problem there. Um. You can have the cannabis retail in proximity to the residence. Uh, and it can even be contiguous. However, there has to be a pretty concrete separation between the two. And that's what I believe you were alluding to there, you're going to create the um.
Global dividing law.
How about entrance and exit?
Yeah, and then of course, everything will have to abide by building code and be suitable to, you know, to Maine Police Department. So how that actually.
Is there currently a separate entrance for the residential area?
Yes, there is. There is an entrance in the front and rear of the property. So dividing, having that dividing wall will not interfere with the ability to maintain a separate entrance as an access.
Yeah, the only entrance I saw, and I didn't go exploring, I only wanted to see the location uh, with, it's like a door, you're like shoes inside.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's just because, um, so yes, we, we just don't have our shoes inside.
Yeah.
Guys, it's part residential. I've just been using that kind of part time. Um, and so, you know, we've been cleaning it up and and just don't have shoes inside.
No, that 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 I'm not concerned about. I just saw the fuse. I figured there was somebody living.
No, it's, I mean, it's, it's not, and I haven't like sublet or anything. It's just I go there sometimes. As I mentioned, I live in Southbury, so I have a, you know, a house there, but I do have a lot of children. So at times I go over there and, you know, get some work done and things like that, since I have the space already rented, you know.
Okay, so there there's no restriction on children living next door to a marijuana?
The children wouldn't be living there. They totally definitely wouldn't be living there.
And you might be referring to like uh, a distance from like the school?
No, speaking specifically about residential.
I know you are, but I meant like, it is relative to the concept that it can lead you certain distance from my school.
Right.
So like could, could a resident, and that's a good question.
The the residence is okay, as long as it's partitioned, the children can't enter in any way, shape or form the the retail.
What's, what's the distance from the school? Three hundred?
Three hundred feet, I think.
Three hundred?
Yeah.
Are we three hundred from the sanctuary?
Yes. I haven't measured it.
I have the architect looking to, and I remember having a conversation specifically about that.
And I actually, this this is a pre-K, because I said that.
I first this K.
Well, this particularly came up because, uh, no, Wellspring, Wellspring, when they were across the street, now they're in the back. But when they were across the street, they were slightly closer to sanctuary. And then, yeah, because they're like.
This this this, right. This distance looks further than that.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, I just.
No, yeah, I.
Because you were talking about schools, so.
Yeah, yeah. I think the only concern is if the live component is being preserved some extent, that people are going to be, if there is, there are kids or your family residing there, there's going to be a question of being, you know, ingress and egress. So they're going to have to be able to get out through a separate entry from the one that they get into.
Yeah, that's my, that was, well, again, to my question.
Yeah, and I haven't seen the interior. I'm great at reading floor plans, but that's something when it crosses Rick Adman's desk, you know, he'll have comments about that and what is permissible and what's impermissible.
Just, there's still, there's still the planning board. If it even gets that far, because again, it would not get that far if you don't even authorize.
Didn't this already go before the planning board for at least one? Uh, I was contacted by somebody that said it was on the planning boards in general.
Yes.
It's going to seem something.
Exactly.
Okay.
It it didn't happen before this meeting.
Yeah, okay, so let me clarify that. That's a good point. So we, when we got this initial sort of light contact from Miss Rivers, and then, anyway, so that was a long ago. And then just through the, to the natural course of consideration, I don't want to ask, I think it was just presented to Bill Enser. And we started moving forward with sort of like the expectation that it would go in due time to the planning boards, and he was trying to give me this. However, we didn't get to this step sooner and and then, uh, but the planning board needs the areas to escape it. So it had been postponed at the planning board. But to go, my early question was going to be relative to the planning board, um, you know, site layout and other loss. It still does require a special permit, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so, so my presumption is that the planning board will get this level of detail when it comes to like the layout and working relative to the residence, et cetera.
That's right.
Um, or what is it?
Just a clarification. It was not Bill who expedited it. I, it was on me to expedite to try to do the parallel permitting at the same time, uh, especially in consideration of the uh, the state's general direction as it uh, pertains to social equity applicants and, you know, kind of backtracking those applications specifically as a way to regress past um, the injustices and and uh, you know, the organs drugs, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, so we, with Miss Rivers, with her application, we did, you know, wanted to get things going fast. You know, the machinery of government can oftentimes be slow.
Well, thank you for not letting Bill go there with us.
And and thank you for your honesty in that.
Yeah, it's, that's all.
Okay. And and by the way, if anything else, the HCA has to come back from here as well, so. Yeah, we'll have a look. Yeah, we have other questions, but I don't know this. Does anyone have any other questions for Shar or Steve?
My my only comment is, and I I appreciate the presentation, I appreciate your want to be in Maine. Um, I, I just personally, I I can't, I can't authorize a a fourth HCA in that little area. Um, because, I mean, we already have, we already have Wellspring, we already have Rise. We already have another one that's in the wings that that there is that could open at any time next of Wellspring. And it it's just, in, in full disclosure, I'm one of the ones who who brought it to the, brought it to town meeting several years ago that I wanted to limit our, our um, our cannabis retailers to two, I think.
Yeah.
Um, they failed, which is fine. Um, but I, you know, I I I appreciate the thought that you put into this presentation. I don't want you to take that away. Um, but, you know, I I I can't support it just because I can't have four in a little triumph. And that's my. My reasons.
That's been consistent.
I mean, hasn't it?
Very consistent.
I asked him, it's the third one too.
Yeah. So in in hearing Ju- Justine say that, which is, you know, not a shock, but um, you know, can you? It's separate from this. Can you just get us an update on what's going on with um, the flower here and sugarloaf and all that? Because like in our conversation in regarding this.
Yeah. Do you want that later?
No, I don't need it now. I'd like to get it down the road, you know, it's just not, it doesn't, it doesn't affect what Shar is going to do. So I just would like to get um, I'd like to get a follow up on that because that's been two years since we've heard from them.
Yeah.
Or seen him. It's been a bit. So just, just, you know, is there still an intention? What is it, you know?
Yeah, well, very, very briefly.
No, he said them.
Don't.
No, if you have information now, go ahead. I.
All right. It's my, it's my understanding that we're having uh, financing issues and those have been resolved. And they're now actually in arts building, arts specialty building and preparing for uh, well, they're renovating.
They're currently renovating.
They're currently, yeah, those dumpsters out in back have been in the, in the basin that are right behind his building. That's those were, they're associated with sugarloves.
Yep.
Looking there to label them.
So. I got an update on that guy too, but what um, what is um, well, it there's a, there's a problem with the layout, right? We never resolved the problem with the layout for arts. That problem was never resolved.
I'll have to go back and check.
There's some fencing and some other stuff going on there, and and it was, it was going to impede on other people. There was an issue, there was an issue with the fencing.
That was the delivery company that we said, that we said no to. So that, that's.
In the old, the same building?
In the same building.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, okay, okay, okay.
Prior to that, there had been some discussion about the uh.
Where and how?
On the front.
Like, yeah.
But then they moved it to the back, if I remember correctly.
Well, then like, you go into arts, but then it's a separate entrance again, it should go. I will double check and that's how it all. Yeah, but I, I mean, this is separate. I think it's a good idea to always double check.
Okay, so. So Mr. Arthur and all, and Mr. Nem, and the rest of the planning committee, I've been a community, planning community committee, are going to have an opportunity to um, you know, kind of vet this on in their, their way and do that, that. You guys are going to discuss an HCA if we vote to allow you to. And then it all still comes back from here and then we have the, the process that's to move forward, so.
Sharon, one other comment I'd like to make is um, I want to thank you for coming in as an individual. Um, in some of these other times, we've had uh, you know, counsel, which is fine. People have the right to have their attorneys. And they come in and they, you know, try to blow smoke about how wonderful their uh, this, their, you know, client is, et cetera. Um, and you don't really get a sense of who it is that we're dealing with. And then they try to tell the other, one guy came from Bedford or something, he talked about how wonderful Maine was. He'd never been in Maine ever because he was on Zoom. Um, and, you know, mispronounced names and everything else. Not that that's the worst thing in the world, but there's a sense of connection when it's not. So thank you for coming in yourself and presenting yourself and presenting your business plan yourself, because I think it goes a long way.
You're so welcome. Thank you so much for being, for making that comment and for being so welcoming. I really appreciate you saying that. I honestly was a little nervous about that. So I really appreciate you taking the time to say that. Thank you very much.
All right, that being said, um, would anybody like to make a motion on this item?
I will move to authorize the town administrator to negotiate a host community agreement, HCA, with Rivers Natural Healing for a recreational marijuana established license to be located at twenty four Main Street.
Forty two.
I beg your pardon. Forty two.
Okay, would anyone like to second that motion?
Say it.
Okay. Um, is anybody else, have any further questions for Steve, Greg, Shar, or anyone else? Can we guys do this? Item issue? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, um, good luck. If you need anything from us, call Greg. You're close by. We we won't be far. Well, good, but good, good luck in the process and good luck with everything else as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. I really appreciate you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. All right, on to town meeting planning.
So Sharon, so there's two, two um, actions for the board to consider. Um, we do it in order. One is to consider the address that was drafted by Mr. Smobergen and the um, the second one is you guys got to tell me what you want to do, tell me, on my list ready?
Put it away.
We want to.
Um, I, I'm, I have no problem with Jeff's um, you know, recap presentation. I don't know if anyone else does, but I'm, I'm fine with that. Appreciate it and thank you for that. Um, as far as the article goes, the article's. Um, as far as the article goes, the articles go, um. You know, I don't see anything within the articles that's gonna, you know, prove to be controversial. Does anybody else?
Wait, can we go back?
Other than the bunny rabbits?
Well, I, I have, I actually have a question about the, so we'll go back to like the order.
My, my first question is, I think the board should probably take a motion to do, I didn't expect the board was gonna maybe approve the statement that was drafted by Mr. Smolberg and all, I mean, Jeff tonight. But I recommend that, just kind of make it very official, but I didn't, so I didn't know that was an expectation if you're gonna approve it tonight or. I didn't want.
Well, we didn't approve it tonight, we're not gonna be able to bring it to town meeting, because.
Yeah, I, that's fair.
All right, would, would anybody like to make a motion in regards to? The message from the Maine Select Board to Town Meeting?
I will move to accept and approve the message from the Maine Select Board to be distributed.
Uh, to be offered to town meeting?
Presented, offered at town meeting, uh, on May twentieth.
As drafted.
As drafted by select board member, Jeff Smolberg.
Do we have a second? Second.
Is it the intention to just have it as a handout?
The I asked, I, that's exactly what I had. My, my understanding was I, and Jeff and I, of course, funded all this, but was to have it as a handout, not to be right ahead of time.
This is my understanding for the board from our.
Yes, yes.
This was, that was, that was the direction of the board at the last meeting, in that, that came from, you know, Dick's. How Dick wanted it done, and we decided, why don't we just make it, make it the first time as a handout, and if we feel as though it's something that we wanna do. From the stage, some point, we would do it, the, at a later date, but the first time through. This was the direction that we agreed on, um, I think we took a vote at the last.
Yeah.
And maybe, and maybe it can, um, apologize to the fact that it's in the packet, or that we. That says someone knows it's there to read.
One of us.
Well, and after Dave, we'll put on a, we'll go on the website.
If you put a line, and and then when the first person gets up to read, um.
Yeah.
You know, article number one say, oh, by the way, there's a, in case anyone doesn't know, there's a, there's a, uh, methods from the Maine Select Board to everybody in the packet.
Do we wanna have, um, although Jeff bought it, uh.
Yes.
All the signatures at the bottom, or all the?
What you guys do?
All the names.
I like that, just because I don't like having your page of just one line.
Yes, yeah, it usually.
I'm gonna use some digital signatures if approved.
Okay, very good.
Second, second?
Second, second.
Yeah, thanks. All right, all right, so, thank you. Um, no, all in a favor. Okay.
All right, thank you, and I call it that picture after that.
Um, I, so back to, I guess back to the, 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 um, articles, is there anything on there that anybody thinks is gonna be? Controversial other than the roosters?
Well, I'm a little confused about the Powder Mill. Overlay District and MBTA Communities. And ADUs all being discussed and voted together, because I don't feel like they're the same thing. I think that the MBTA. Community is kind of a, I, I mean, for, for people who are paying attention, it's kind of a hot button community, uh, hot, hot button topic.
Um, so, I would, I would, I would agree. But we don't have a say.
So Dick's down this.
Dick, Dick Downey is gonna do it the way he wants.
Well, um, well, we can't give feedback to Dick saying.
No, you can't, you can't. The opportunity to give your feedback will be Monday the thirteenth during the prep meeting.
No, you, or you tell me down, I'll, I'll prep it. So how, how would you prefer it?
Just vote separately.
Okay. Discuss separately, vote separately.
I just think so, I mean, I don't, and and again, I'm, I'm one person, so, so if no one else feels that way, let me know, but I just feel like. You know, I mean, the, the MBTA communities bylaw is a, is a big deal. And I, so I think that just by grouping it was something else.
Yeah.
You know?
I agree, and I would say, truth be told, that the bundling of these articles. In my eyes, was an advent of COVID. And an advent specifically because we were doing outdoor meetings during a pandemic, when people were not supposed to be gathered together. I'm, you know, I, I, I don't like the plan, and now Dick can do what he wishes, he's the, um, the moderator. But I think each article should be independent of one another and presented separately, and that's what town meeting is. It's not rushed through and vote, it's rushed through and discussed. And now granted, I think that there are some routine stuff, like the, you know, the one talk where we accept the town report, and we do that. That certainly, there's certainly not, yeah, certainly not anything more than consent. Again, we're having a discussion over something we have no authority over, but the, uh, bottom line is, I would prefer to go back to town meeting. Where we have, uh, each and every article discussed separately, as opposed to grouping them together and. Sort of marginalizing certain articles, because it's included, if you don't want that one, you have to vote yes, because. Uh, it just becomes clumsy to me.
Mr. Chair, we, I just, I don't want to interrupt the board and and expect you all to stop talking, but I wanted to tell you that. Sounds like Chris Arsenal is on, if you wanna get his input.
Oh, Mr. Arsenal, how are you?
Uh, good evening, everyone.
There he is.
Um, good evening, I wasn't, uh, prepared to speak tonight, um, but I, 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 I did not actually. Uh, I was not aware that there was any discussion about bundling these items, and I just want to, um. Give my support to what David just said about, uh, that these articles shouldn't, from my point of view, should not be bundled, particularly. I heard that twenty-seven and twenty-eight, one article twenty-seven, twenty-eight were proposed to be bundled together, those are very sort of different articles.
Correct, yeah.
And I, I think the town deserves a, um, you know, a clean vote on each, would be the way I put it. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
You did, so I think we can, I can base the, the, the town moderator to take down it, then also, a number of you are invited to the regular pre-meeting on Monday, as, as Chris you just mentioned. Um, but as, as David, as you said, like, it is like how he sort of runs the show, like, um.
But you can have it taken out, so how, I mean, honestly, like, if we have to, we can stand up at town meeting and ask for it to be separated.
Yeah.
But I'd rather not have to do that, because I'd rather. I, I'd rather this come from Dick and him plan it, like, we, we've kind of given our feedback and, and again, and. Chris agrees with that feedback, especially with those articles. I would rather be able to move forward. With that, without having to al- almost go around Dick to actually get that done.
Well, you know, to, to David's point and to Chris Arsenal's point, I, I, I agree, this was, this was a, this, this bundling of articles and. You know, it makes sense for a few of the smaller ones that are, you know, similar, and, you know, if you bundle the water and the wa- two water items and the two sewer items. I get it, I get, I get that, but. You know, um, to have some of the other things bundled is, is wrong. I, I think to the point that David and Chris both made, that these are. These are important things, if they have, have them just kind of lumped together, I don't, I don't think is, I, I think it goes against the, uh. Spirit of town meeting, even though it's allowed legally, because it got, it got allowed to happen during COVID to save time and to. You know, do all the things that it did during COVID, I don't, I don't think we need it anymore. I think we should go back to, you know, this X number of art- articles, it should be pretty close to that number of votes. And in discussion, by the way, the discussion is more the important part than the votes.
Yeah, and I, 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 quite frankly, I think one thing, uh, diminishes the discussion on various topics, because you lose, wh- what are we talking about? You know, it's, it's, are we talking about the first article that we're talking about, are we talking about the second article?
Well, I mean, let's go through, like, you know, you get to the revolving funds. Certified free, free cash should be a standalone every year. That's a huge, that's a huge, even, even if the money shrinks, it's still an important, um. It's an important article every year because of what it represents and what it is.
So can you imagine if somebody wishes to do like what Natasha did, uh, last year? And, or two years ago, whenever it was, and reallocate? How to do that under this circumstance? It becomes, it becomes so confusing to the voter, and you really don't have the discussion on the real top.
I don't, I, I. Yeah.
Dick is, Dick is rather, Dick is rather inflexible. I don't know if it'll change for us or anyone else.
To start, right? I mean, we didn't always do it this way, correct?
He came up with the idea to do this, the first, the first town meeting. That was in COVID outdoors, when it was sweltering hot, the first, the first one we did. He came up with the idea to do it this way, and he's, he just kept it going. You know?
But I don't know as if anyone's given him, I, I, I don't know.
I don't know any of the feedback.
Feedback of, all right, we, you know, we, we feel like we're losing some of the intent of time meeting here.
Oh, we know.
Now, like, what is the official means of communication between the select board and the town moderator?
So officially, you can invite him, it's an invitation, since it's a separate elected official, you can invite him. I, as the town administrator in the charter, I can more or less summon anyone I want to. Typically, I just email them, and then I say like, uh, and I'm writing down a lot of this stuff you're, you're saying, I'm just saying, like, it'll be kind of like, uh, an anarchist brief to a court. Just a friendly little like.
I think, I think that, I think that's, that's enough.
Yes, you know, it's Dick. It could be brought up at the planning, however, typically Dick is very strict about and very controlled, and I appreciate that, he's got a structure to it, about like. It's logistics, the before the town meeting, it's not typically, it's really, how do we feel about something? After town meeting, within a week or two, and it's already this, but I don't remember what's on ahead, we have like a follow-up, and we say, well, went right, overballed, it's like a, it's like an after action. Where it could maybe also be appropriate to bring up, like, you know what, we really didn't feel like this is giving a fair shake. I remember last year, and Chris is already signed up, but, um. He went at the very end, and it was late, and he had it kind of like fly through.
Yeah.
And, and for better or for worse, like, it was a judgment call that Dick made at the time, like, we're gonna get this. So those things are kind of up to. My, my expectation for this evening was to, I'm gonna write him some quick email today, and maybe he'll bring it up, maybe more, but. And we still don't.
The, the question, the other question I have, um, regarding the planning meeting, um, is, is there going to be? I mean, there's not a horrific amount of articles on the agenda, um, some of them could generate some discussion. Um, so is there going, is there a time where we're not gonna take new articles after? Because I do think that's the other part of it, is you, you just have to make a second night.
When you, oh, oh, I don't know if Dick has some valuable.
I think that's certainly a part, is that, you know.
Because I, I think that, I mean, that was, that was, that was the reason that we flew through that, and everyone was exhausted, and everyone just voted yes, just to get out of there, so. You know, I mean, that, that's not, that's not the part process either, so.
It's tough to say, because you're right, I mean, like, in, in that particular, it was, we knew it was gonna be a heavy meeting, because of the home interest school vote. And so I don't know, I don't know if Dick, like, is predicting, I mean, rightly so, there's not, it is a lot of standard business for the most part, there's, it's had roosters, it's, it's own. So, maybe he doesn't expect to go to the second night, and therefore, he didn't need to say, hey, ten o'clock, we're closing. I don't know.
Get eighteen articles, it requires a secret ballot, that's a lot.
And that's the other aspect that leads to, um, you know, his desire to bundle in. Is the delay that you have in voting, uh, in getting the results of a vote.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't know. I see, I, it seems to me, and you know that I'm, I'm a nerd for this stuff, but the other towns make do, and they all vote independently on each article. Other than town report and obsolete equipment, uh. Everything else is done, uh, independently of ano- of one another.
I'm not a town that does all open booking. There's no secret ballots.
I, I think these are, some of these are.
Some of them.
According to, well, according to, according to, um, Lisa Mead. They go over this, they'll go over this on the thirteenth, and they'll, she will tell him, no dick, that has to be secret, so that, she's saying it, it's.
Yeah, they have had that conversation already, so, so.
No, but what I'm saying is, is to the point that you're standing.
Funny, because I, I, I just assumed that that's the way it was, and then I, I hear in other towns that it's, there are other towns that have just had.
Our charter bylaws dictate.
That's all.
Okay, so, so. I know, Mayor loves secret ballots, so they, I don't, however long.
Our bottle says that if it's, if it's something worth over, what, fifty thousand dollars or something?
That's right, I think it's something, you're right. The state does dictate certain things, um, I think it's, uh, borrowing, zoning, so that, that changes the, the. Majority or two.
Right.
Otherwise, but, um, it's, I think it's up to the town whether they consider it or not. Or something could be opened, and then someone could make a motion, they consider it, and then, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Thanks.
Well, I think it's, I think it's important that even the presenter of the article, meaning namely your planning board, is concerned about bundling. Certain articles and, you know.
I, I, I agree with one, I think in general, though, the bundling, if it saves time and issues and similarity, I think, really, there's a. You lose democratic participation if you cross over that threshold where you have to go to a second night, and you lose turnout. If you start to extend meetings to that length, so you have to think about that balance.
Yeah, we'd be fortunate to get a one-on-one second night to be current, I mean, once.
Oh, I agree.
Well, but, let, let's have, we, we'll start the conversation with him on the thirteenth, Monday the thirteenth, and say, Dick. There are those that think we should stop doing it that way, and he'll tell you why you're wrong, and then he'll do it his way anyway. But at least you've had the conversation.
Yeah.
I, I don't think that for a second that he's gonna take the, take it under serious consideration or make a change. And that's based on a conversation I had with him about something totally ridiculous that he just didn't wanna hear, so.
So with that, with the point, like, to, I'm just trying to.
We have, I just, I just lost him, it was either twenty-two or twenty-three, twenty-two, I think, that are sponsored by the select board.
Yeah.
Um, is a tree committee presenting themselves?
Uh, yeah, yeah, they are, they're presenting, I think you were making the vote, uh, over now the break is, the, where does it happen, like, who's making the motion for tree, oh, there.
So what, so just, how many, each, and just, you know, listen to Biden, I guess, I don't know. I don't have a problem with that, unless anybody has anything.
Obsolete equipment, I'm kidding.
That's what my wife tells me. She calls me article two.
You're, you're right, Justine, that's a, that's a good way of approaching it, it's like, how many, how many select boards specific to that?
And don't just, i- i- unless anyone objects.
You wanted to buy that by.
Divide them all by.
By, by, well, no, because that was my. Good, well, because that was my question, because I thought that, so, does CPC present their own?
Yeah.
Like, they, they move.
They usually, they move their own.
I think so.
Yeah, so everyone moves their own, with the exception of, so, so that's why the select board, like I said, we have twenty-two, I think.
CPC one, two, border health, well, would we do the border health?
No, they do it.
One. There are five of us. So a couple of us get to do joint, no. Will meet every other word.
I think the first, first, I don't know, first five are a layup. In terms, in terms of the just repetitive events, the only one being free cash. Maybe it's the first three and free cash is one, but then you might as well be up there for five, because it's a bundle.
It's a bundle.
I'm okay with it, Chris, just distributed along the flat, yes, and go ahead, I'll take my side.
Yeah. I can, I can. We can figure that, we can figure that out, right?
I think in the past, I've done this spreadsheet, and I apologize when I did the same project, I, I think earlier, I think in years past. I had, like, already broken out of, of resume, like, this section, this section, this section, according to the votes. So I can do that again, and, and if you all are really in deferment, I will just go down the list, and I'll just assign people. Okay, I'm following up.
Yeah. Yeah, so we just have some notice that we can review the warrant.
Yeah, so.
And so we can review.
What I did, this time, I did also, um, already, I've worked, like, in the last couple days.
The presentation.
I've done the presentation, and, and, so whatever, so you can look at, and this is for, right, so you can, you can edit however you want, whatever articles you want, but if you feel uncomfortable with those particular articles, you're gonna sign it, let me know. And then maybe we can.
Okay.
Just give us enough time to be.
Yeah.
But as I said, most of them are the, part of the business of the town.
Well, you know, I would, I would say to that.
Yeah.
I said, I wouldn't do that until we hear from Dick on the thirteenth.
Oh, that's my kid.
Yeah, we'll see what he has to say, that might affect, that might affect, that might change the number, um, in, in. Yeah, we'll see what he has to say, that might affect, that might affect, that might change the number, um, in, in some way, you know, or whatever, but.
Correct.
Um, I, I don't know, that, what else, what else we have to plan if we come in, you know, than that? We, we'll be posting for a meeting at what, six thirty?
It's six thirty. Yeah, that's pretty standard.
We'll be there at six thirty again.
Go there a little early, so you can check in.
Yeah.
Oh, I did, there was one, Mr. Chair, actually, and I, so I mentioned this earlier about the layout. So in the PowerPoint presentation and the script, you'll see that uh, the layout. I don't remember that is, anyways, it'll, it'll say that there's an amendment to, and this is pretty standard, usually there is a number of articles that are amended. Like, it's not exactly as written in the law, that's, that happens every year, this year. There's only the one, which is, or whatever it is, and, and it talks about how the plans have not, the plans have been thus certified. So it's not January, whatever it is, it's August eighth and August.
Oh, it's for the acceptance of roads, yeah, 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 there was those, those, those.
Yes, the plans, that's it, so that you'll see written in there. It's the, oh, actually, once finally I have it written up right now, so the, the motion will be moved to accept Article nineteen as printed in the war. Period, it'll say, move to read Article nineteen as printed in the war, except the dates of June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, March third, twenty-twenty-three. Except words to your actor on, and adding the date August twenty-nine, that reflects the dates, it's pretty standard, but I know it looks a little confusing, but. It was, just for the board's ones.
Thank you, Dave. Yeah, that was kind of an update, but the other, the other, one of the things that were on that, that. That contract change was the, um, some changes to the uh. Pre-K and the uh playgrounds, the location of the playgrounds and the shape and the sizes. They actually, much longer discussion than I thought it was in pre-robot, but. At the, you know, um, the, the team, the team of people that do one of the, doing the stuff. They have a pretty good understanding of how it has to be, and it's just the way some people wanted to. Do it was kind of amusing, but they got it where everybody agreed that it was a good plan and. Uh, very, very minimal change in the dollars and cents, but the um. Surprisingly, they actually went to um. Brian Haas, um, Robert Lowe, the principal of that school, the uh Lindquist, Miss, Miss Lindquist, who was the. Um, vice principal and the incoming principal, cause Robert Lowe's leaving it in the year. And some teachers and others, and they, so they had a lot of input from people that um. It's gonna affect most, so they think they have a good plan for the, the uh, the new playground. So, that was at Senior Center. Sat through a meeting, the, the last meeting and listened a lot more than I spoke. And um. They want to come to us with some stuff and, and bring some stuff to us, but there's nothing ready yet. Um, and, you know, uh. I think a lot of the people on, on the committee understand that, you know, money is an issue. Um, timing is an issue, and right now, there isn't a dollar put aside for that project. And, and I don't know that. Everyone's in alignment with that thought process, cause you're talking about at least being imminent. And other things taking place in, in, in timeframes that I. Frankly, I don't understand that, that where the timeframes come from, I did miss a meeting, so if that's a meeting I missed, that's when it all came up, but. They had timeframes that I just don't understand, and I haven't had an opportunity to speak to um, Jerry Colbert. But I, I, I intend to before the next meeting, would you agree with that, Steph? That some of the, some of the things that they want to time very quickly are ahead of where you might anticipate them being?
Yeah, little bit, I think we need that report to start things off, right? Which won't be ready until October, November timeframe, so.
Right, yeah.
That's the guarantee.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I, I don't really think it'd be ready that quickly, I thought that Amy was kind of saying that there's a. There's kind of in a point now where there've been like a little bit of a lull in the activity. Because they've done all the um, data collection and they've done the focus groups and they've done all that. Now they're gonna work to compile and um, and analyze, and that's gonna take a bit of time, and I. I, I think some of the people in the room thought that they would just, you know, the world would stop and they would give us the information tomorrow, but.
Yeah.
See, they have some stuff that they want me to bring back to this board, so I said, well, prepare it, now bring it. We'll see. But they're working hard, they have twenty, twenty-five committees and subcommittees and they're ready to go. Don't ask stuff, you're in three of them.
I've avoided it so far, I'll be on the next one.
If anybody ever asks you to be on that committee, don't ever miss a meeting, cause if you miss a meeting, you're gonna come back on three different committees.
They're notorious for that, yes.
But, but it's a good group of people and they are working hard and it just seems to be some disconnect with timing and, and, and money, but. Um, they, they, they want to see it happen, so they, they're working hard towards it.
Yeah.
Okay, um, minutes, we have some minutes to accept.
Move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of March nineteenth, twenty-four, as shown, authorized using digital signatures if approved.
Does anybody have any questions about the minutes? All up here? Town administrator's report, Mr. Johnson?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm here. Here we had an election, um, and I, and I don't wanna sound on the thunder, but I do wanna, of course, thank clerk's office and workers. And, and everyone that pulls together, mayor, police, the, the fellow school staff, student council, it takes a lot. Even if it's kind of. Normal and not very controversial, it still takes a lot of work, so I appreciate that. And all the works, for turning out and all the mail-in ballots, et cetera, but it's successful. Um, I always love uh, when I get great pictures on the town administration board, so I, of course, got a compliment, the library and the council nation. The library in particular, always highlighting um, the, how the library is really the cornerstone in a lot of ways of the community, and they, they always have a lot of great. And then um, one thing to know about the council nation is uh, any level of sunlight that charter have been talks with this um. You know, like national firm called L P I, um, we are, have negotiated moving. Away from Action Unlimited for the distribution of, of the newsletter into this, this other vendor, L P I. L P I um, sells ads, so it becomes at no cost for the, the actual production of the newsletter. Um, however, the distribution of still falls on the town, but still, I mean, that's the same as compared to paying action for the publication. Um, and Amy's very excited about it, a lot of towns in Massachusetts use this platform, she, she, she really, she thinks it's the best path forward. Um, but you won't, you won't see any change until October uh, twenty. So it'll still go all the household, it's, it'll just. It'll just be a different, it'll come from a different vendor. And then um. Um, and then I also wanna highlight some, some, some great collaboration amongst all the public safety departments, fire, police, and uh, dispatcher. Um, because uh, they pulled together, it looked like a very big act uh, for the high schools and for the juniors and seniors about distracted driving. So, that's good, that's all I have unless there's questions.
I will say, I will say, coming around the corner and seeing all the apparatus and everything in the parking lot, I was like, what, what happened? And then they said, oh, I saw the car, and I said, oh, okay. You know, it was practice for that, that, the event with, with the kids. It's a lot of equipment with them, interesting. Um, yes, I have, so, yeah, I have one thing on my, my chair report, it's just a question for um. Right, maybe, maybe Justin, and I don't know who to address, so you can tell me. At the million golf course, they, they have installed four charging stations, three or four, right? The other, the other afternoon, when I was, I was doing my thing up there, and a guy, when I was leaving. A gentleman pulled in, he was plugging his car, and so I, I had never seen anyone do it, you know, and so I walked over and I said, you know. Had a conversation about the cost, and he didn't have a problem with the cost, he said it's seven bucks for two hours, and you know, so we were talking about. How that um, kind of computes to miles per gallon and all that and the cost, and he said, it's right, what would you pay for gas? You know, I'll get eighty gallons, about forty miles per gallon at three fifty a day, whatever, so, you know, an interesting conversation. Well, one of the things that I said to him was, what's with the two hour limit?
If you remember, I have the board approve the rates.
Yeah.
And the limits, um, and the conversation with the limits was terminal. So as they start to have um, use patterns, just remember this is a cloud system, so we went to one proprietary product, so it's. Uh, efficient and effective utilized, um, but a lot of the limits are set points so that some don't park their cars overnight. And we, all these locations are public use park.
Right.
So it's changed. Um, the golf course is probably the least utilized U V stations that we have within our um, entire process. But we're hoping to see that change, the, the thought processes as. So the data, the data and those processes that they call forth may actually.
Right. So here's, so here's the, the, the conversation and the, and the questions. And, and, you know, concern in a sense, right, not, it's, it's not gonna, you know, change the world, but if you play nine hole. And you pull in the parking lot, you get your clubs on, you get your stuff, you get to the tee, you play nine holes, and you're done. And then you, you know, do you stop for soda or beer or do you whatever, that's three hours for nine holes. So that's three hours that way, if you play nine holes, eighteen holes, you're looking at, you know, five plus hours now. The interesting thing about the conversation was, I said, so can you charge for, if you're there for four hours, can you charge for hours there? You know, whatever, he says, no, they can only chat for two hours, and after two hours, they start chatting, we rent them the space. Which I thought was kind of funny, but my point being, it's, is, is there, is there a possibility to adjust those times? To fit the facility, if, 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 if it's, if it's a, a, a place and it's just. The sea away or something, I get it, but i- i- in, in reality, a, a, a man or a woman or anyone else that goes up there to play a, a round of golf. Is, is gonna exceed those times, and then by no fault of their own, cause you're not just lazing about and leaving their cat sitting there. They're, they're gonna, they're gonna be, you know, they're gonna be there for longer than that period.
So the reason that they get charged for those things is an actual penalty. That we impose as part of that process to enhance change. But to your point, Chris, the board could definitely make a consideration, we have the ability to change the movement rate at specific locations.
I don't know, but I'm, I'm asking, um, I'll talk to Brad, and I'll ask him if they have similar stations and other courses that they manage. And see, and see what they do, I, I, I mean, I, you know, I'm sure that the rate for parking rental. If you don't wanna pay the parking rent, you just unplug your car.
Well, that's.
You know, and that's, and that's kind of what some of the, you know, the guy parked next to him in a, in a Ford F two fifty super, super duty. He's not plugging it, and he's, you know, this guy's squeezing it to plug his car, but. Um, it was very, it just, it's just a, a very interesting thing.
Part of the penalty process and the theory on the penalty process is to count.
Right.
So the point is essentially looking through these stations, they have an app.
Yeah.
And again, there's actually not as many as you think, and Maynard has the luxury of having a significant amount of U V stations. That other communities, is if someone is actually running low battery, they only have so many stations to go to. And if that station is full, and someone was just squatting as opposed to a gas station, you don't just sit with the pump and then leave. There is a turnover process, but again, we can definitely have a conversation about isolated locations. This is still a new process for the town manager, um, we don't have a significant amount of feedback. I haven't had a real complaint about anything they've. No, I, I think you just, you tell us how, how long did you ask Justin to?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought, gee, that's kind of, it's kind of a, a penalty for, you know, for, for no fault of your own.
Right.
Sounds to me like it's an incentive to improve your golf.
Improve the pace, improve the pace of play, you got no problem with my golf. I played, I played, I played last Wednesday morning, I teed off at five forty and I was at my house by six thirty. I, I have a problem with slow play, but it, it's just a matter of, you know, during a regular, during a regular hours. You know, whatever. Um, the other thing, do you know Andrew DeMore? Do you remember him, playing what? Just, just an aside for, for whatever, wish him well, he's playing in a Massachusetts Hickory Open on Friday, so good luck to him. As a guy from town, yeah, and that is, he plays, he plays golf with. Clubs from the twenties or thirties, all Hickory shafted clubs and the whole, yeah, that's pretty cool. Uh, I, he came out, he came out, I didn't recognize him, and he said hello, and he, he had the, you know, an old Sunday bag with the. And, but he, but anyways, he's playing in a tournament with the um, with Hickory shafted clubs. Which you just don't see very many of at all, that was kind of cool, that was it, but that's all I have, um, board members, Mike?
Um, just one comment, I give my own personal thanks to the uh, election, all the people involved in that. Um, the one thing that struck me from the results was, and also when I, I did actually vote. In this case, there were just two candidates for select board, yes. Um, and it seems from the results that there were different numbers of people voting for each candidate, and I'm wondering if. Part of that was it not being clear to people that they could vote for both candidates. Now, in this particular situation this year, it's, it wasn't a big deal, of course. But in a scenario where there might be three candidates vying for two seats. Then um, that potential confusion, if it's not made clear, uh, could be more, more critical. So, I, I know, I'm just going by, you know, the difference in numbers. I mean, people could have had all kinds of reasons for voting for one or two or no candidates. Um, but it was just something that occurred to me, so clarity, of course, is a challenge.
Imagine if you lost. No, it's, but it was, it was, it was a different kind of turnout. You have anything else, Mike?
No.
David?
All right, quickly, a couple Saturdays ago, Mike and I had the pleasure of being up front of town hall. For the uh, Arbor Day event, um, small little crowd, but very enthusiastic about. Um, you know, planting trees, not only in front of town hall, but all over the community. And uh, it's, I'm once again a volunteer committee that uh, shows their love and desire to. Make Maynard a better place for all of us, and they should be thanked for uh, for their dedication in uh, you know, trying to do what's right. And then again, Mike was here, what's his name, Smith, um, Steve Smith was here. Um, and he and his wife donated uh, trees to plant, uh, you know, that, that thing.
Yeah.
Uh, should be recognized.
I will say, it, it, you know, thank you to that committee, but also when, before they put it, they give you so much. Great information about the trees they're putting in and all that, that it's, it's, it's pretty cool what they're doing, but that's good to get all the information too.
Yeah, that's it, okay, Justin?
Uh, I want to congratulate um, Mike and Lindsay McConkey. For their positions on uh, select boards, and um, I unfortunately don't have the. Uh, I know Hillary, congratulations to Hillary for school committee, and I don't have the name of the other. Um, thank you, Alexis Fishbom, um, so congratulations to everyone. Um, it was, it was, um, it was an interesting vote this time, because I think there was so much that was uncontested, that it was just. Um, I, I think it looked like only eight hundred and fifty-five people voted, from what I can tell. Because if you voted two, you end up with, or eighteen, so nine hundred and eight, I guess, maybe. Um, yes, nine hundred and eight people out of ten thousand. Um, but I appreciate all the hard work that went into everything, and uh, and I can't wait to see what all of you do on the board next year.
Yeah, why, are you leaving tomorrow?
You are not that lucky.
Is that vacation time?
Uh, I'll also extend my congratulations to everybody uh, that participated in the election and thank the town staff and, and looking forward to. Continuing to work with you, Mike and uh, Lindsay, as you were on earlier, to joining us. Um, also brought attention to the article question with the charter review committee, um, and especially extend my thanks to. Uh, Bill Coleman, our fearless leader, chairing that committee, that's been a very long process, we uh, guided it through some. Many hours of, of conversation uh, around uh, what you saw on ballot. Uh, I also had the opportunity to attend the Maynard Spring Art Walk, so thanks to the Maynard Business Lines and all the partners there, uh. Uh, the, with the corporal campus in art space, looking um, at. Uh, ballots for artwork discipline, um, all of the collect opinions, um, there, uh, good reviews on the jazz band that was playing up in Royal Parks. Another, another successful event, and the weather was. Thank you to all of the participants for that. And that's it for me.
All right, would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
Second.
So, all up here. Next meeting is the twenty-first at six o'clock.